So being 6:46, I'm going to go ahead and open the Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, April 9th, 2019. We are immediately going to go into executive session, and we will be returning to open session. And at that point, I will be reading through the agenda for tonight. So is there a motion?
I move that the Board enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20A, Paragraph 2, to discuss negotiation strategy with respect to non-union personnel. Brian Saros says an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position, and that afterwards, the Board will return to open session.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Carrie's wearing a T-shirt.
Yes, my eye. When you can see me, I don't think you can see me.
Reed eye.
Brown eye.
Lusk a little eye.
Louis eye.
It's a little colder here. We will catch back up with you, Carrie, in a bit. Good evening, and welcome to the Carlisle Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, April 9th, 2019. We have just come back from executive session, which started at 6:45. I'll report on it in a second, but that's why we're running a few minutes late. So I will read through today's agenda. At 7 o'clock, we will have community input. At 7:05, there will be a presentation on the fiscal year 2018 audit report by the Audit Committee. At 7:45, we're going to be hearing about a proposed Eagle Scout project, Malcolm Meadows' cleanup. At 8 o'clock, we'll get an update on the Complete Streets Project implementation and the charge. 8:20, status on the master plan from the Master Plan Steering Committee. At 8:45, we will review the proposed town meeting warrant articles regarding the Community Preservation Committee recommendations. At 9 o'clock, we will review the FY '20 income budget recommendations and talk to them. At 9:15, we will be signing the annual town meeting election warrants and taking a position on some of the warrant articles, not all of them. At 9:45, we will have the Town Administrator's Report. At 9:55, liaison reports, 10:05 minutes, and 10:15 adjournment. As always, I may take some of these things out of order. Oftentimes, the later ones are used to fill in if we're ahead of schedule, which doesn't happen often. So with that...
Got a comment there.
With that, I first would just want to quickly report on the executive session. The executive session was to discuss the contract negotiations for the fire chief. And I just want to report that we did sign the contract. We are in agreement with Brian on all the terms of the contract, and that contract has now been signed by both parties. So we're very, very happy to move forward and very, very happy that Brian has agreed to join us as our new fire chief and our first-ever full-time fire chief for the town of Carlisle. So with that said, let's move on to community input. Is anybody here for community input? Yes. Tim, would you mind just giving her a microphone up there?
Yeah. Come this over here, Jeannie.
That's pretty good when they know my name, so. My name is Jeannie Chnetzko, and I'm at 898 Maple Street in Carlisle. I just had a short introduction. I've been doing a lot of research on understory and Lyme disease and all kinds of things associated with living in the country. And there's fascinating work being done by many scientists right now, very current, and it's evolving as an alternate culprit to understory degradation, particularly because most of the work that was presented to us here in Carlisle was in Pennsylvania forests. And the title is "Earthworms Are Invading Our Forests." I did not know that earthworms are not native to New England. They were all killed off during the glacial period. And what we've had is a time period where there were no earthworms below halfway down Pennsylvania. And in the last 100 years or so, with trade coming in, there's been European and now Asian earthworms, and they turned out to be very, very aggressive. And in fact, the night crawler that you're familiar with is a European one. This is by Dr. Peter Grofman, a microbial ecologist at the Cary Institute of Ecosystem Studies. People tend to think of earthworms as benign or even beneficial creatures. Gardeners love them, but earthworms are not native to the northeastern United States. In regions of North America, once covered by glaciers, earthworms are recent imports from Europe or Asia. They likely arrived as stowaways in ship ballast or in plants that settlers wanted to establish. Conventional wisdom is that earthworms improve soil by aerating it, so their establishment might seem like a non-issue, but the forest soils are already well-aerated. Quote, "Within about three to five years, the forest floor just disappears," unquote, according to Peter Grofman. "They destroy the rich layer of organic matter that sustains forests, plants, and animals." And then towards the end of the next paragraph, "They have a negative effect on biodiversity, especially these spring ephemeral plants like trillium and trout lily and salamanders." So I just thought I'd input this into Carlisle as something that people might be interested in looking at in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you possibly send a link to that article to Tim?
Oh, absolutely.
So we could follow.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other community input? All right. Seeing none, let's get on to the audit report. Come on up, and we can put some chairs up here.
Chairs are gone, I have to stand.
Sit on the floor.
That's how we treat our guests. We have people to do work for.
Priscilla, why don't both of you come on up?
Slide the card off.
And I do want to just, because your backs to everybody, just make sure you speak up so that anybody sitting behind you can hear you. Great. Thank you for coming.
I'll start off. I am Matthew Hunt with Clifton, Larson &amp; Allen, here to talk about the fiscal year 2018 audit. What I'll talk about is more of a financial statement summary, then I'll turn it over to Kevin from the Audit Committee to go over the management letter. So with your financial statements, and I'll be making page number references as well. If anybody has any questions as I'm going along or is wondering where I'm getting my information, please let me know. But obviously, your financial statements is a pretty robust document, a sixty-page-plus document. So my goal, when I do these types of summaries, is to try to give you some of the real key highlights of the financial statements. So the first piece of the financial statements, on page one, is your auditor's opinion. So that's really the most important part of the financial statements, is what is our auditor's opinion on the numbers that you see in this report? And the opinion is what we refer to as an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that you can receive in an audit. And what that basically means is that your financial statements are free of any misstatements. And just as a frame of reference, the town has received that type of auditor opinion report for many, many years in a row, and I think that's a real testament to Priscilla and the financial team that you've been able to get that unmodified opinion for many, many years in a row. And the reason why I don't mention Bonnie is she was...
I wasn't hearing. I got nothing.
I'll toss you some bouquets if we have an unmodified opinion next year. So getting into some of the numbers, your what we call full accrual financial statements start on page 15. The way governmental financial statements are set up is there's a set of financial statements that we call full accrual, which includes all your capital assets, all your long-term debt, all types of long-term assets and liabilities. And there's another set of financial statements that doesn't include those balances. So the highlights of this particular full accrual set of financial statements, I want to focus on net position. You'll see that your net position down at the bottom of page 15 is categorized into various categories, including net investment and capital assets, which is essentially your capital assets less any debt used to finance those assets. That's a little over $28 million. You also have various, what we call restricted net position categories, which total a little over $5 million. The piece that I always like to point out on this particular financial statement, because when people see deficits, they don't like to see deficits, and you'll see an unrestricted deficit there of $15.9 million. Just as a frame of reference, these unrestricted deficits in this particular full accrual set of financial statements, this has really just become commonplace for all Massachusetts municipalities as a result of the pension liabilities and the OPEB liabilities that have come onto the financial statements over the past couple of years. So again, nothing to be overly alarmed about. It's certainly something to be concerned about from a long-term financial planning perspective. I know the town has put a lot of planning and consideration into those types of liabilities, but at this point, you really do see these types of deficits very commonly in Massachusetts.
Looks like OPEB is about two-thirds of the debt liability, isn't it?
Yeah, your OPEB balance does make it close to $13 million. So yes, that is certainly a big portion of it, and your pension liability as well is $9.4 million. So that's a big part of it as well. And those are really the two key factors that cause that deficit. So that's the highlight of the full accrual financial statements, jumping a little bit ahead into the set of financial statements that what we call our fund financial statements start on page 17. And what I like to focus on there is your general fund, particularly your general fund fund balance. What you'll see is that your general fund fund balance at the end of the year was $6.3 million, which overall was a $700,000 increase over the previous year. Again, similar to net position, there's various categories within fund balance. What I'd like to focus on is what we call your unassigned fund balance. That's basically the portion of your fund balance that is not restricted in any capacity. That's about $3.9 million, a slight increase from the previous year, about a $5,000 increase. As a frame of reference, that $3.9 million does include a little over $1 million of your stabilization fund. One of the things, and sort of backtracking a little bit on page nine, there's a table within your MDNA section of the financial statements that was brought on a couple of years ago, gives a good trend analysis of that unassigned general fund fund balance and how that compares to your revenues. So you'll see at the bottom, there's a ratio, and that's what that ratio is, is unassigned fund balance compared to your revenues. We feel like that gives a really good reflection as to basically your reserves within the general fund and how healthy they are, and also a trend as to how they're going up or down over the past several years. So you'll see that that ratio is 12.3% for fiscal year 2018, which is a very healthy ratio. We always like to, when people ask us, well, what do you like to be? We like to say, you know, you want to be at least at 5% with that ratio. So the fact that the town's at 12.3%, certainly a healthy percentage. One thing you'll notice is that it has declined over the past several years. And again, that's something that we're seeing very commonly in Massachusetts municipalities as well, again, with those, you know, the increased pension costs and OPEB costs, et cetera. We are seeing those ratios go down over the years, but again, 12.3% is a very good percentage. Going back to your balance sheet on page 17, you'll see that there's other columns within there other than just your general fund. Those are what we call your other major funds. So just some real quick highlights. CPA Fund has an overall fund balance at the end of the year of $1.3 million. You'll see this year, there's a new major fund for the communications project, which just got underway in fiscal year 2018. The reason why that's now showing up separately on your financial statements is due to the short-term note that the town had to issue to finance that particular project. And again, you'll see some deficit fund balance there, but again, that is more based on the fact that right now, that project's being funded by a short-term note. Once that project is funded by long-term debt proceeds, that deficit will go away. Page 18 is your other major fund related to the fire truck. That was around last year as well, but again, the only reason why this shows up as a major fund is due to the short-term note that financed the purchase of the fire truck. And again, the deficit fund balance is due to the fact that it's financed by a short-term note. So those are really the highlights of the main part of the financial statements that I wanted to point out. Now I'd like to sort of jump ahead to your footnotes, which is a lot of good information in the footnotes as well. And so just some real key highlights on your footnotes. Page 42 starts off discussing the town's long-term debt and outstanding debt. You'll see that outstanding long-term debt in total for the town at the end of the year was about $12.5 million. The town did not issue any new long-term debt and retired $1 million of long-term debt in fiscal year 2018. And just as a frame of reference, another ratio that we like to point out is how much of your debt service is part of your overall expenditures. You know, you don't want that ratio to be too high because that's a fixed cost, but you also don't want it to be too low because it could be a reflection that you're not meeting your capital needs. Just as a frame of reference, the town's debt service expenses are about 4.5% of your overall expenses, which I also believe to be a healthy ratio. Moving forward on footnotes, other footnotes I want to point out is the OPEB footnote. And one thing to point out this year is that there was an implementation of a new GASB standard. You may recall, we've been putting that in our management letters the past couple of years to make you aware of these new standards that were coming out. So everybody likes to talk about GASB standards. It's a lot of fun, but so I don't want to bore you too much with it, but basically, it was GASB 75 that was implemented this year. And really, from a layman's perspective, in trying to sort of understand, well, how did it make this liability different? What's the difference between the previous standards? In the past, the previous standards were such that you would have an actuarial evaluation of your OPEB liabilities. And what the actuary would calculate is, it would basically come up with a number that says, if you wanted to fund this liability over a 30-year period, you would have to put in X number of dollars into a separate fund in order to be able to fund it over a 30-year period. That number that they would come up with would then be compared to what you actually paid on a pay-as-you-go basis for your retiree health insurance costs, and the difference between the two would increase your liability. Kind of a funky way to do it, and so GASB, I think, woke up and realized, well, wait a second. Why don't we just have an actuarial calculate the 30-year liability and just put that number right on the financial statements? So that's really what GASB 75 is, that it's a much smarter way to calculate the liability. So that's really the change this year. And what that did, and we knew it was going to be the case with all municipalities with that change, is that the liability was going to increase from what was being reported before. So that OPEB liability for the town went from $7.8 million to $12.9 million, a $5 million increase, which again, was not a surprise given the change in the standards. One thing I want to point out, and Kevin might get into this with the management letter, it is discussed in the management letter as an informative comment. The town has made some movement towards setting aside money for OPEB, but when it comes to GASB and the GASB standards, what GASB standards say is that in order for any set aside of OPEB assets to actually be counted towards that liability, they have to be in what's called an irrevocable trust. So the town, at least as of June 30, 2018, had yet to have that money be set aside in what we call an irrevocable trust. So if anybody was sort of wondering, hey, you know, we have these set aside assets, how come that didn't help, you know, reduce the liability? Once that trust becomes irrevocable, that's when you'll start to see those assets really impact that liability, because not only do you get the assets counted against the liability, you also get to increase the discount rate from which the liability is calculated. So when the discount rate increases, the liability decreases. So that's something I wanted to point out. And so really, for us, that's what we feel from an audit perspective, is really the key highlights of the financial statements. I could turn it over to Kevin to talk about the management letter, but if anybody has any questions now about the financial statements, I'd be happy to take them.
It's not actually about the financial statements, but it's more about the OPEB. So we have a $12.9 million liability, but there really isn't any circumstance where we, as a town, would suddenly have to come up with $12.9 million to pay that, right? Because that's something that we owe over a period of time, right? So, I mean, lots of times you look at this and be worried and say, well, that liability may all of a sudden be called in. That can't happen in this case, right? I mean, this is just a benefit that, you know, retired employees have that we need to pay to them over time.
Correct. It's an accrued liability. So really, the only obligation that you have is to pay those retiree benefits as they become due. And so this liability has nothing to do with, oh, well, we're $12.00 behind on paying our retirees' health insurance. Yeah, it isn't anything that's coming due. It's a full accrual, long-term perspective liability.
So as a town, the most important thing is that we make sure that we always have enough money to be able to pay on an ongoing basis all of those things with some buffer just in case, right?
Correct. Right. And that's part of your annual appropriation process, is to estimate what that number's going to be on an annual basis, and the town always funds that, and there's never been any issues there.
So along with that, there's typically the management letter, which will come with some recommendations in it. So I'll talk about OPEB first, since we're already on that subject. So back in, I think it was 2015, we started, the town started setting aside funds, and we've gradually been increasing those on an annual basis, which is why we're just over a million in there now. So as Matt pointed out, with the, I think it was last year, the town took the vote to go ahead and authorize the setting up of an irrevocable trust. However, we haven't executed on that yet, based on advice from some of the other communities around. So that's one thing for consideration now, if we go ahead and consider, is the timing right to go ahead and take that funding that we've set aside for OPEB and to do that? Because to Matt's point, in addition to offsetting the liability, it would also give us an increased discount rate in the assumption of the calculation. So there could be some benefits there. It's at least worth considering. So that's one of the points. Another point is, you know, this year, this was a tough year for the Finance Department and Accounting Department, just in terms of all the activity they had going on. So they had to put in some, you know, invest a lot of personal time and go through some heroic efforts to go ahead and get the financials closed out. As you can see, it was successful by the fact that we're sitting here with this audited, you know, financial statements. But a couple of the things that attributed to that, one was the software upgrade. So we went through a successful software upgrade, but that takes, you know, a lot of time and effort, as anyone knows who's gone through that. And we also had personnel transition. So I think those two things combined, along with just the normal workload, made it a challenging year. So one of the recommendations that we wanted to look at, too, is knowing that the software upgrades will only continue as that becomes a more critical part of how we manage the town. We need to come up with plans for that, so we can plan for those in the future. And also, we're looking at some things, like maybe some recommendations around cross-training and just transition, you know, types of things as we anticipate personnel transitions coming forward. So we wanted to make sure that we put some thought into that. From an IT perspective, there's just some operational kinds of recommendations that are being considered in terms of taking a look at the processes, policies, assessments, analysis that we could do on a regular basis, just to, you know, continue to improve our operational command in the IT environment. So that's an area where we were looking at potentially. And then finally, the financial policies and procedures, you know, making a concerted effort to get some of that documented. And that would also help with the challenges around the transition activities and upgrade activities. The more that we can have those policies and procedures documented, the more we could more easily bring in resources to help and continue to, you know, keep folks educated on that. So those are all in draft form right now, but those are the things that we've been looking at in terms of the management letter. Did I hit them all?
I have a quick question about the software upgrade. So this is Munis, right? When we went from Munis on-prem to Munis, the cloud version, is it our own environment there, or are we just along for the ride when they're doing the upgrades and we don't need to do?
Right now, they're doing the upgrades for us. We've scheduled them weekly, so anybody finds something that needs to be upgraded, they upgrade it quickly, and we get the use of that. It's the next step in the upgrade, which is maybe two years down the road to Munis 2018, right, money? That's a big step forward.
Okay. So all the minor releases and everything are just, they just...
They're going to be doing, yeah.
There's a major release that requires something that we're going to have to do.
Yeah. I think they're more ready to help us now because of what we just went through. It was bumpy.
So I have a question about the irrevocable trust. You said there was some input from, you know, other towns about some drawbacks in doing this. What sort of drawbacks?
Yeah, maybe, do you want to...
Yeah, I could speak to that. And Priscilla, you can jump in as well, because you're the one who actually relayed this to me. The town's investment advisor, later to OPEB, has been recommending to municipalities that hold funds with them to consider the idea of holding back on doing irrevocable trusts until the Massachusetts Department of Revenue issues formal guidance on how to go about setting up an irrevocable trust. Just to give you a frame of reference, the legislation on this has changed over the years. The modernization municipal acts from a couple of years ago sort of changed the way. But usually, the Department of Revenue, when you have that kind of legislative change, will come up with an informational guideline release in which they sort of lay out, here's the parameters if you want to set up an irrevocable trust, or whatever the legislation might be. They have yet to do that. So I think Bartholomew is recommending, might be better to wait until DOR gives that formal guidance, that you go about establishing that trust based on DOR's guidance. Just as frame of reference, there are municipalities who have set up irrevocable trusts in lieu of that DOR guidance. It is something that is possible to do done. It's not that Massachusetts is saying you can't do it. It's just, I think that that's just Bartholomew's recommendation for the town.
I'm wondering if there would be any wisdom in doing hybrid, like not putting everything from the OPEB into one single irrevocable trust, but holding some of the funds back so that you kind of get the best of both worlds, you get your discount points and whatever other benefits you can possibly... I don't, just putting that out there.
So what exactly do you get if you put it in an irrevocable trust? I know you said the discount rate goes up and the liability goes down, but what exactly does that translate to saving or whatnot for the town?
I can give a sort of a frame of reference. The actuarial evaluation that was initially issued by the actuary actually was given credit for an OPEB trust. I think there was some confusion as to whether or not it's irrevocable or not. My recollection is that the liability was actually reflected at about $7.5 million, somewhere in that neighborhood. Right now, it's like 12.9. So if you, you know, if you, at June 30, 2018, had an irrevocable trust, and I think the discount rate would have been 6.5%, whereas now it's around 3.5%, so it's a pretty big spike. It's a $5 million, you know, change in your liability. It makes a real big difference.
And like Kevin said, every year, we're putting more into it.
Right.
You know? So you put 3.50 into it, four and a quarter into it, it's going to add.
As I understand it, the way we have it now, though, is if we had some other emergency and we really needed those funds, we could use it for something else. So if you put it in an irrevocable trust, that's it. It's OPEB and nothing else. That's why I'm thinking, you know, maybe some hybrid type of thing where you would guarantee the OPEB, you know, certain percentage of the OPEB funds, but maybe guarantee that we have stabilization somewhere else.
Could you put out for me in here, what is our annual spend on the retirement?
Unfortunately, on the financial statements, if you were to look at page 19, you see employee benefits. That includes, though, you know, your health insurance for your active employees as well. There's no specific...
Very inflated then.
Right. There's no specific line item, but let me just jump. Previously, the footnote would have that number, and actually, there is a footnote table on page 45 that you can jump to. And if you look at that table sort of in the middle of the page, you'll see benefits payments of 243, 610. That is your retirees' health insurance.
Okay. So we're paying about a quarter of a million dollars to retirees, yet we're required to put $13 million aside in order to cover that debt?
Remember, that's accrued over the...
Yeah, it's a projected over a 30-year horizon.
I understand. But there's not going to be a time where we have to pay all 30 years at once, right?
Correct.
So if you were to completely fund this $13 million fund, what, why would you ever want to put it in, you know, irreversible trust? Because you're never going to be able to spend the money, ever, right? It's going to be, it's, it would seem like, you know, having a fund that you could easily pay that and make sure that you can always easily pay that, you know, maybe just from the interest or whatever, would make sense. But having a $13 million, I realize that nobody at the other side of this table here thinks this is, yes, we should... But having a 13 million, I realize that nobody at the other side of this table here thinks this is, yes, we should be doing it. But it just seems odd that we have a 13 million dollar liability for something that's not, you know, is costing us a quarter of a million dollars a year and there's no circumstance where all of a sudden we have to pay 13 million dollars. I understand it's, in the future, you know, that's how much we're gonna be paying out.
Right. We're committed to that in the future, but you're right, it's a much smaller on an annual basis, which is why I think Bartholomew has made that recommendation in the past.
And so how, you know, how far have towns gotten towards paying, you know, towards these funds?
There are some that are fully funded that are, they're, yeah.
Wellesley is fully funded.
So they've put a, so let's just say they're us. They've gone ahead and put 13 million dollars aside?
Yep. And at some point, the only thing I know we've talked about in the past is the potentially have an impact on ratings when we go to borrow money, but I don't, I mean, to date, I don't think we've been negatively impacted, but that's.
Are they gonna have a problem where they have this fund that is just has so much money and is just accumulating so much money? And there's not gonna be anything they can do with it?
One benefit is that they're actually able to pay these annual costs out of that fund instead of.
Yeah, you don't need 13 million dollars to get a quarter of a million dollars of interest, right?
Sure. And I do think, I do think the bond rating piece is something to consider again. I don't think at this point in time, the bond rating agencies are really dinging, you know, municipalities if they don't have these set aside funds. But as time goes on and certain municipalities start doing it more frequently, you know, comparatively speaking, other communities aren't doing it, it could potentially be an impact.
There was a time when we couldn't do OPEB. There was a year where like six extra teachers decided to retire or we tried to actually buy them, you know, encourage them to retire. So suddenly, we would have a really big spike in our benefits thing that we couldn't protect ourselves from. So it is nice to have some sort of a fund to protect yourself from that, but I'm sort of agreeing with you. We don't need, I don't think we need to save the entire thing upfront.
If you had a fund that, you know, you were pretty certain on a terrible year, you were still gonna have maybe twice as much as what it was gonna cost in case you had those spikes, it seems like that would be a totally reasonable thing to do.
Before, it was a total unfounded liability and we weren't even allowed to save for it. But now, it's like we're forced to save more than we need for it. It kind of went the other way.
Could you just explain a little bit more for me on page nine? I think I spent a lot of time, that you were describing it, just trying to find where we were. The percentage, the percentage that has been going down and is now 12.3, what does that represent? And should we be worried?
It represents your unassigned fund balance per your balance sheet, okay? So basically, the portion of your general fund fund balance that is not constrained in any fashion, it takes that and compares it to your revenues. It's sort of just a frame of reference to say if for some reason you had a big decline in your revenues, you know, what is, what are your reserves to be able to absorb that kind of decline? That's why we compare it to revenues. In terms of being concerned, the reason why I wouldn't be concerned is because that 12.3% is a very healthy ratio as compared to other municipalities. And again, the decline in the ratio, that's something that we're seeing as a trend also in municipalities is because each year what we're finding is more and more free cash is needed to help fund the budget, et cetera. The more and more free cash that you use to fund the budget, the more that that number's gonna decline. Of course, you're a little bit constrained with your revenues. Property taxes can only go up a certain percentage each year, but you've got expenses that are going up much larger than that, two and a half percent. So that's really why you tend to see that trend over the last years.
Yeah, it worries me just because it may be a big number, but it's gone down 3% in five years. And it seems to me that means we're spending cash rather than increasing taxes for the decisions.
I think some of that was by design though.
Yeah, it was by design because we were building a school and we wanted, we built it up so we could use some free cash, right, Kevin?
Yeah. So we were trying to use that to kind of soften the curve of the increase on taxes as a result of the schools. So we had intentionally built it up and then we had been applying some of that.
And so do we have a goal of what we want that percentage to be that, you know, we built it up from like our optimal or do we, you know?
Yeah, I don't think we have a documented.
We don't have, I think that 12, 10 to 12 is what we shoot for.
And that's one of the things we wanted to address in creating those policies.
Yeah, I think we had always talked about in the 10 to 12, to be healthy.
So we expect a couple more years of it coming down because of the school?
Yeah.
That, you know, till the end of the year and the numbers shake out, it's hard to say where it will be next year.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question regarding financial literacy. We have no way of giving our citizens a report card about how much it costs to run any part of our government because the benefits are all lumped into one bucket and not associated with any one department. And so it's very difficult for people to get a real sense of what it costs to run our public services, to run our schools that's fully, you know, fully encumbered with benefits. Have you, any, do you have any guidance about financial literacy kind of issues that maybe what other towns are doing to help their citizens better understand how their money's being spent?
I wouldn't necessarily be able to speak to the financial literacy objectives of other municipalities, but I do, I would point out from a financial statement perspective, again, it's not broken down by department. But if you look at page 16 of the financial statements, this financial statement, again, it's your full accrual financial statement. Those benefit costs are broken down functionally. So again, you don't have departmental detail, but what we have to do with these financial statements is you'll see there is no line item called employee benefits. There is no line item called pension benefits. We take those expenses and allocate them functionally. So just for frame of reference, again, I can't necessarily speak to financial literacy objectives of other municipalities and ways to do that. I think that's something for the town to consider in terms of information that's available on the website, et cetera. But this does at least give you a functional breakdown of your expenses and the benefit costs are allocated functionally.
Okay. So if we look at this 25 million, or let's say we look at this 3.7 million for public safety, that includes everything? That includes all the benefits and everything?
Exactly. Yep. And also, you know, this.
That's fully loaded.
Yep. And this financial statement too, I mean, again, it's full accrual, which isn't really necessarily how you budget and how your operations work, but it does show you in that last column, this net expense revenue column, it does show you direct expenses of a particular function, including benefit costs, revenues that apply to a specific function and what the net expense revenue is. Now, of course, obviously, if you look further on that table, you see your real estate revenue is $26.9 million. That doesn't get applied to any specific function, but you do also in this financial statement get to see, you know, what do some of these functions, what do some of these departments, what do they generate specifically for revenues specific to their particular function? So that's another value add of this particular financial statement.
So and then just, I'm sorry to drag this on, but so if I look at education, that's 4.1 million. Those are grants, that's money we get from the state and the federal government for education. Is, therefore, is chapter 90 money not counted in here? Because I don't see the 90,000 or whatever it was that we got.
Public Works.
For public works is.
96,000.
I think last.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at public safety. I'm sorry.
Public Works, 95, 941.
I saw the word public and stopped there.
It's okay. But I'm just wondering why, oh, because, and then the net expenses are what's actually been spent? Why is it, why do we have these, the last, why is the last column in paren?
It's because, again, if you look at your 26.9 million dollars of real estate revenues, all this front part of the table is showing is, is revenues that are directly associated with a particular function show up in this front part of the table because most of your activities are funded by real estate taxes and that comes below the table. That's why you.
That's why that's all they get. Okay. Thank you.
Correct.
It's not that we're spending more than.
No, 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 no. Again, it's just functionally showing expenses and direct revenues of those functions. You got a lot of general revenues below.
Got it. Okay.
Makes sense.
What I asked. Let me take this home.
Any other questions? Thank you very much and thank you all so much for all your hard work on this and throughout the year to make it such a great audit. Thank you. I know it was a hard year.
It was.
And it's over.
We're onto this one.
It's over and now it's time to start the next one, right? So it's 7:45. We have Eagle Scout project from Malcolm Meadows. Why don't we go ahead and move this seat back over here?
We've taken all your chairs again.
I'm fine standing. Great.
Okay, well then we, could we give him a microphone?
It's good for dramatic effect. See right behind this podium. Get your microphone.
And if you could just start with your name and your address and then jump right into it.
Okay. I am Robert Nickel. I live on 119 Stern Street. And I'm doing an Eagle project where we are cleaning up this trash pile in Malcolm Meadows. And I was wondering if you would sign this letter to the employees of the Carlisle Transfer Station to allow us to go and dump, go and take as many truckfuls of trash to the station as we need in, on those Saturdays.
Okay. Do you know where the trash came from? Do you know what the?
We think it's this. So there's someone named Malcolm who owned the Meadows before. And he dumped all of his trash there before donating it to the town.
Okay, so it's his own private landfill type of thing. And how far are you gonna have to haul it down the road? How far away from the road is it?
Not very far. Like 20, like 40 feet, maybe less.
So that's when you first walk in? It's kind of off to the left?
Yes.
Is it that area? Okay.
Well, I learned something.
Wonder if you'll find anything interesting.
I've been allowed one visit a day to the town. I think there are times where I've been more than one.
Yeah, I mean technically, you're really not supposed to, but nobody monitors.
Small car.
So we'll stay focused on his project and not dump trips. So what do you mean by cleaning up the rock walls?
So there's some rock walls and we noticed some trash like in them.
Okay, so not moving the rocks around, just taking the garbage out from amongst the rocks?
Yeah, and then this is all, excuse me, town land, right? None of its trustees of the reservation, right? You're staying on the town's side, not the TTOR side. Okay.
300 square feet.
Yeah, there's a good amount of stuff in there though. Cons come with support. Right, is that area wet?
No.
You're just, and you're just gonna take the stuff off the surface? You're not gonna?
Maybe like a little bit down.
Gotta be careful the deeper you dig. It's like town politics, the deeper you dig, right?
How many people do you think you will have helping you?
Around 10.
And you're the project manager?
Gotta be affirmative with this. Yes. I'm the project manager. I will drive people to do the work, you know?
I've been pelted him with questions. Anybody else have any questions? Carrie?
Your council and your troop, where is it? I can ask troop this project. I'm just asking for permission to bring the stuff to our transfer station, right?
Yeah.
That's the only question that we have to say yea or nay to, I believe.
There's a letter at the end.
Yeah, so I mean ultimately, what do we just, I mean, not that anybody's probably gonna stop you anyway, right? Just want a letter? Or a special permit, right?
Not a commercial hauler.
We do have a letter here.
So that's the, that's the, it is in the back. Okay.
You can sign.
Do we need a motion?
I think this is great. Certainly support it. Sure, go ahead and make a motion.
I would move that we approve the signing the letter which authorizes the Boy Scouts and.
Well, that's the official one.
Dump, take the trash from Malcolm Meadows fee-free.
A second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Read eye.
Uskalo eye.
Louis eye.
Brown eye. Great. Thank you very much. It's a great project. Thank you for taking that on.
Hopefully, it won't snow anymore on your project.
I see Carrie's. Just sign Carrie's with your initials. That way.
We will do that right after this. Thank you. Okay, so is there a motion to accept the audit report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Is that okay? Okay. Carrie?
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Uskalo eye.
Louis eye.
Thank you very much for keeping us on it. Okay, so let's jump down into Town Administrator's Report.
In your packet, you'll see a request from the Police Department to use Center Park for a departmental event on, I think it's April 27, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. I assume the police detail would not be necessary.
I think they would have to have one.
Okay, is there?
I moved, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, does anybody have any comments or suggestions, questions?
Are they inviting the Board of Selectmen to this?
I haven't made the motion yet, Carrie, so hang in there for a second. I move to approve the Police Department's request to use Center Park for an event on Saturday, April 27, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Uskalo eye.
Louis eye.
Okay.
All right, the second item is again the amended charge, the Facilities Committee. I did attach an amended charge. I spoke with Kate earlier today and apparently two members of the Facilities Committee are not asking to be reappointed, so there'll be some membership changes. So I think those are requests to kind of take this under advisement and maybe make some further changes to the committee. Is that correct?
Well, the major problem is that originally, when the committee was constituted, there was specifically a member from the school committee. Then somehow that got removed from the charge for whatever reason, but it doesn't seem to be in there at the top anymore.
It's just five members appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
And one of the members that is leaving is. And one of the members that is leaving is a School Committee member, so we, I guess one of the things the committee was gonna talk about was, you know, how important is it to have somebody from School Committee, and, you know, et cetera. Do we care?
Yeah, I'll have to pull that up and see if I can remember why.
Maybe because the membership for long-term caps is so specific, maybe it was thought to make it a little broader on facilities?
I propose that we go ahead and we make, you know, we move on modifying it as is now? Just because that way we can get those two people on?
That's fine, it's just, yes, I agree, I'm just kind of giving you a heads up that this was a question that came up in the committee.
Yeah.
For tonight to be discussed.
I'll have to look back through the different versions of this to see if I can see what the red line, why it was taken out, and I'll try to do that this week.
But if we wanna put the two non-voting members on?
Yeah. Is there a motion to adopt the municipal facilities charter as presented tonight with revisions for April 6th, that says 2018, so that must have been last year? There isn't a revision date on it. As presented.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Senior I.
Reed I.
Brown I.
Oscar Lilo I.
Louis I.
Okay.
We have two requests from the Conservation Commission that Alex Para be appointed to the Cranberry Bog Working Group, filled with vacancy left by the resignation of Stephen Smith, and that Dan Wells be made a full member of the Cranberry Bog Working Group, he's currently an associate member.
Okay, I thought we actually moved that last week.
No, we just appointed Alex to the conscom.
Right, yeah, right.
Oh, so is the Cranberry, sorry, sorry, I missed the Cranberry Bog. Okay, so...
Nice, we haven't had a quorum, so we haven't had to meet.
I move that we appoint Conservation Commission member Alex Para to the Cranberry Bog Working Group, and that Dan Wells be appointed a member of, also be appointed to be a member, full-time member of the Cranberry Bog Working Group.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Louis I. Mr. Senior I.
That's enough.
Reed I.
Brown I.
Oscar Lilo I.
Eric.
So we'll be happy.
All right, and then that's the package order from the Garden Club requesting use the Town Common for their garden, country garden tour rather, on June 7th and 8th. It's an annual request that the board approves.
Their motion to approve the Garden Club's use of the Town Common for their country garden tour on June 7th and 8th of 2019.
I so move.
From 10 to 4 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Senior I.
Reed I.
Brown I.
Oscar Lilo I.
Louis I.
There was an amendment to that of 10 to 4.
10 to 4.
Also attached here, you'll find a contract, a proposed policy regarding personnel change request, it's been forwarded to Personnel Board for their review and input, and if you have comments on this, please send them to me, we'd like to get this on an agenda in the future.
So the one that you saw in the packet should have incorporated our comments from the other night, and so, you know, we're not gonna discuss it tonight, 'cause I think it's important that we get the Personnel Board feedback first, but if you do have any comments, please just send them on to Tim so we can get those incorporated, and then we'll get feedback from the Personnel Board, and we'll get it on an agenda at some point soon after the Personnel Board has had a chance to review it.
I just have one thing though, that I was thinking about, that we hadn't talked about before on this, and that is if we establish a policy to review the, to do a review of personnel every five years, that I would like to have a statement at the beginning saying that, you know, because we would have that policy, changes in the interim will be very difficult to do.
Yeah.
Or that sort of.
Yeah, I think before we put something like that in policy though, I think we'd need to know how much did that thing cost us?
Yeah, okay, well, but it's something I would like to, let me ask, let me ask us then to please fold that into the conversation when we do do this, the rest of this policy, because I think it's kind of hand, goes hand in hand.
Yeah, yeah.
Is April 3rd the most current draft?
That sounds about right.
Yeah.
From last meeting.
I did it, I did it when it...
Is it Saturday?
Yeah, you sent it a little while ago.
Saturday or Friday, right?
Meeting's the second, right? Isn't that the second?
Yeah, so it was sometime after that. Unlike me to have done it just the next day. That doesn't seem right, but...
Well, then again, if it was a Saturday, you probably weren't doing anything, so...
That's gracious.
Item six in my report, we have a proclamation from the Board to Douglas A.G. Stevenson Jr. in recognition of his achievement as an Eagle Scout, you'll recall that Douglas' Eagle Project was creating storage space in the Hyland Building for the COA and others. I think we've got a proposed proclamation in the packet, the Board, Jen, as you read
I would move that the Board issue the proclamation in recognition of Douglas Stevenson Jr.'s Eagle, attainment of Eagle Scout rank.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Senior I.
Reed I.
Brown I.
Oscar Lilo I.
Louis I.
Great, great job Douglas.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you very much for the help over at Hyland too.
All right, next item, item seven, he's only been fired chief for an hour or so, but he already got a request for the Board.
All right.
Chief Soros, well, as an outgrowth of the meeting, we had led with him last week, discussed the need, the desire rather, for backup ambulance, and we're getting a new ambulance, in fact, it's arrived today, but there was some conversation of, you know, the many opportunities that it makes sense to have a backup ambulance when the frontline ambulance is out of service, or, you know, maybe in service in nearby communities, so there's an opportunity to actually retain the ambulance that we were going to trade in, and maybe, Nathan, you could explain that.
Yeah, I can, so, I think it's my fault, so, you know, during the course of our discussion, you know, we had talked about the fact that we were getting this new ambulance, and I remembered, you know, as we were getting, seeing the quotes for the ambulance, what we were getting, you know, as a trade-in value for the ambulance was incredibly low, and, you know, far and away, our largest number of calls are medical calls, and yet we have lots of fire trucks, which I think is important, but we have one ambulance, and so I just casually asked Brian, why did we not keep the old one? Wouldn't it make sense for us to keep the old one? And he was very enthusiastic, yes, we should, so he has gone out and, you know, so by law, it has to be garaged, if it's not garaged and then you put it back in service, has to be re-inspected, this, it has been inspected, and so it's good for, I think it's, it doesn't have to be re-inspected again, I think he said for two or three more years, two years? Two or three more years, we would get $5,000 trade-in for it, was it?
We'll get a $5,000 trade-in for this ambulance, which is fully outfitted, of which we would have to pay to take the radios out of, and it's a fully functional ambulance that we know, right? We've had it, and we know, we know what's good about it, we know what's bad about it, we know it has everything in it that we need, they can make room in the fire station right now for it so that it can be stored, and they can figure out how to pay that $5,000 without having to ask us for more money. And so, you know, I was very enthusiastic, yes, you know, because, you know, right now, you know, you have to keep your fingers crossed that there's only one medical call at a time, and we also, we can't go on, oh my goodness.
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid, we can't do mutual aid for the ambulance, because we can't be without an ambulance in the town, so we're not even helping out our neighbors when it comes to that, so I would propose, you know, I've been very enthusiastically endorsing this with Brian, I would propose that we give him the green light to go ahead and keep the truck, and I did say, don't come back to us next year and say, we need a new ambulance, as we have this old ambulance, right? You know, that's, that's not the point, the point isn't that we're gonna have two brand-new $350,000 ambulances, but why get $5,000 for an ambulance that you could really still use?
Yeah, and it was like $1,000 to take the radio out.
Right, and $1,000 to take the radio out.
I could take it out free.
But not legal.
I guess it's too late to cancel a new one, huh?
Tim, your summary there was misleading, 'cause it looked like we were going out to buy a used one, so this, this is a much better report, and I'm also on board with that, I wasn't really happy by going out and buying a used ambulance.
So where it started, you know, where it started was, we thought, you know, we weren't exactly sure what the phase was, and I think there's still lots of things that Brian needs to iron out in all this, but, you know, initially it seemed like what we may have to do is go back to the company we traded in for and buy it back for them, and it might cost us more, but, but even with that, depending upon what it was, it's worth it, because we know this ambulance, right? It's already says Carlisle on it, it already has all the gear in it that we need, it has the radios that, you know, that we need, there's just something to be said about something that we've, you know, we know it.
And probably marginal re-equipping costs on an ongoing basis.
Right, yeah, and maintenance, and, but I think for the value that we get for having that second ambulance, I think it's worth it, given it's our largest number of calls.
If it's raining, we can use that instead of a nice new one.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, we don't have to drive it in the, we don't have to drive the four-wheel-drive one in the snow.
Yeah, not gonna get it dirty, yeah.
All right, do you need any authorizations for that, since he can do it in his own budget?
Give him a green light, and he'll come back with, yeah, a proposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Amen.
All right, and then you see the upcoming schedule, Finance Committee's budget hearing's on the 22nd, we meet again on the 23rd, and town meeting is on the 29th, Monday the 29th.
Should we post the meeting before our meeting just pro forma?
We normally do, whether we, yeah, need to or not, right?
Yeah, we usually do.
6:30 on the 29th? Yep. Okay, we'll do that, that's my report.
All right, thank you, so let's move on to, now we're 10 minutes late, our Complete Streets.
No, I want to sit on that side. It's a thing, I always have to walk on a certain side, so. So we wouldn't have a very long report for Complete Streets, actually, so this worked out okay. Basic update is that the Complete Streets Committee met, and we're reviewing, they're reviewing the design estimates, and they're actually working with the three engineering firms that provided us estimates for the design work in the town center to refine the estimates and kind of even them out between the three, so we can compare them. We talked about timeline, Gary and John, Gary Davis and Chief Fisher have some specific ideas about how they wanna approach the work in being it's in the center of town, so ideally it would, it would be done when school's not in session for the summer, so depending on where things line up with the, with the preliminary engineering work, they'll be able to, they feel they'll be able to coordinate what they need to do, so...
No, it's really good so far. It's not, I mean, we're...
Better say that.
It's moving, it's off the ground. The biggest question was, could we push for this summer or next? It looks like Tim was able to confirm that we can still use the funds next summer.
So, well, we're talking about, we're talking about the timeline, and one of the concerns was, you know, the process for engineering, permitting, and everything getting, being in place, and then coordinating with the contractors to do the work, so we do, we do have flexibility to work in this, you know, in the following spring as well, so we have, we have flexibility, which is really good, because we'll be able to approach this with, you know, the right, we won't be rushing, in other words.
Right, and I think that one of the critical things to this is gonna be making sure that we're getting public input, and, we're talking about...
That's exactly why we didn't wanna...
Changing the center of town there.
We didn't wanna rush, yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna rush the design, we wanna do it right, we wanna get preliminary designs we can present to the town, then circle back afterwards, you know, with them and refine those designs with the public and the engineers.
So our timeline has a couple, you know, points of public information sessions, you know, through the design process.
It is worth mentioning, 'cause I don't think you brought it up yet, about the first project we can go ahead with almost immediately.
Yeah, I was gonna talk about that, yeah, so there was consensus in looking at the three projects, project one is the crosswalk safety, it's primarily focused on implementing crosswalk safety at Banta Davis and 142 Bedford Road, those two crosswalks, it's not in the center, it's kind of in the, you know, outside of the town center, and a lot of the preliminary work was done already when Stan Ski McNary did the engineering, you know, the safety...
Traffic safety study.
Yeah, the safety work, so we're gonna work, the group decided that we would continue to work with them, it was the most economical, and they, you know, they gave us a price of $4,000 to stake eight signs, and then they would do the engineering inspection of the signs, and provide the ad build afterwards, and so, actually, the engineering inspection can be reimbursed by the grant too, so...
Sometimes, I'm not exactly sure of the scope of what stake, I'm not sure what that means.
They can do this sighting.
They're installing the signage at the crosswalk safety, so that has to be, that has to be staked out.
So what we, what we've found is that with the traffic safety study, they basically already have done a construction design.
Yeah.
Right, so we're way ahead of where we thought we were on that first project, which means that once town meeting passes, if the supplemental funds pass to pay for the signs...
We don't have to wait, and which is good, because then we can start, you know, get that, the crosswalk safety stuff taken care of, you know, this spring, right now, which is when we wanted to do that, ideally, anyway.
So I guess when we, when we met last time, one of the questions I was asking was, why don't, why don't we do the big project first, and then figure out what we need to do, and I think the response was, well, we have to do all at once, because that's how we save money.
Right.
So that's what, that's what came out of this discussion, and we realized, project one, which is the smaller one, and it's not in the town center, so the project two and four are the rotary redesign and the sidewalk from East Street to the, to Ferns, that's all in the center, these two are outside of it, they're much smaller, they're the ones, you know...
But, but I think to directly address what you say, what you said, you're right.
We're not talking raised sidewalk here.
No, 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 not here.
We're just talking about putting the signs at the other crosswalks.
Yeah, it's the safety enhancements to the crosswalks outside of town center.
Yeah, these are the signs that say, hey, there's a crosswalk coming.
And then, hey, there's someone in the crosswalk, you better stop.
Yeah, so it's that additional sign.
And then the Jersey barrier that pops up.
But it doesn't, this one's not impacting any of the pavement or anything, it's just the size of the road, it's just putting the signs up and the signage.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there are landing pads on this, so it will affect just, it won't affect the pavement of the road, but there's gonna be landing pads, I believe, on either side of the crosswalks that are gonna be put in.
Especially Banta.
Right, so, you know, that's, that's the plan for that, what else do we wanna talk about, anything? There was the committee, the committee composition, I think, you know, Tim, it was pretty good...
The grant runs through June 2020, but you can request an extension 60 days before that. If you're underway, you can't finish it by the end of June, they'll give you...
Do they give you any idea about how long that extension could be, is it?
I think it's through the end of the year.
Through the end of the year, okay.
Three days.
I mean, that was really helpful, when the committee met, and we were looking at the project timeline overall, from all the pre-construction activity, you know, and also Gary and... activity, you know, and also Gary and John felt like that would be really great. So that was a good, that was good news.
Yeah, for the town rotary, they think it's essential to do it July and August, when the traffic is minimal. And I think, going to what you said, it would be a rush if we tried to fit a design in and start construction this July and August. So, knowing that we have a little bit of flexibility there to possibly push it till next summer, and as long as we get underway before the grant expires, and we should be able to do that.
Yep.
Because the goal would be to have it done by the end of summer, anyway.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, before school.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think that was...
Yeah, so...
Permission?
Well, you also want to talk about a more formal implementation committee for a project, I think.
Right, yeah.
We're kind of a loose working group.
Yeah.
It's probably going to be all on the same basis, but I think the board ought to have a formal committee for the purposes of the project.
Yeah, so, so do I, and the reason I think I brought this up to Tim is just making sure that because there's this grant of a lot of money, making sure that we have a formal committee that's been appointed by the board of selectmen, so that we just don't get ourselves into trouble having this kind of informal thing that's going on.
Yeah. No, so I'll tell you who's, what's represented on the committee now. All of TSAC is on the committee, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, which is the Chief of Police, Chief of Fire, DPW Superintendent, Tim, and a Pathways Representative, which is Deb Belanger. I think that makes sense, to have those, that represented, a Planning Board member, and so Pete is on that committee now. And because there's potential for, you know, more projects, and we're definitely looking at what we'll be able to apply in the future, probably somebody from the Master Plan Steering Committee might make sense to have on there as well, right? And then, to the extent...
Jan has been sitting in.
Jan has been, Jan Corneal has been. And then, to the extent that projects that are taking place in the historic district, we would have, want to have somebody from the Historical Commission on there.
That would probably be life a lot easier.
There is now. Kathy and Annette have been, you know, attending the meetings, so...
Who entered that? Who was the other one?
Kathy Keller.
Oh, Kathy, yeah, yeah, they're both excellent, yeah.
So, you know, I think, and then having a Pathways Committee Representative, which is covered by, you know, TSAC has a representative on there as well. So, oh, and Board of Slackman.
Yeah, I'd love to be on this committee.
So are you on it?
Excellent. Oh, and I don't, and I don't use it on.
As long as we don't meet at 1:00 on Fridays.
Wait, I missed what you said. Something just happened. What happened?
We gained a new member.
You're stuck with him.
Yeah.
Yeah, can we just try to not meet at like 1:00 on Fridays and see? You always send the, those TSAC ones out, I'm like, ah, that just doesn't work. So, but it doesn't necessarily have to be 7:30 on a Tuesday night, but...
Right. Yeah, I mean, in accounting for the town employees that are...
Right, no, that's the thing. I know, I know that there are other, yeah.
Yeah, it's the thing, it's mostly town employees on the committee, so...
Yeah.
If you got, if you want to tell Gary to come in at 8:00 on a Friday, go, go for it.
Gary's probably here at 5:00 on a Friday.
Right, so were you thinking of...
I meant in the evening, you meant in the morning.
As far as the committee composition, is that what you were thinking of, pretty much, or?
Pretty much, yeah, just formalizing the structure.
So, I guess what I would ask is, if you're going to be the person on it...
Yeah, I was supposed to draft something.
I think that Tim has something. If he could just formalize it, work with them, and let's get a formal charter that we can have, so that we can appoint people and have it be formal.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Oh, you know what?
Can't go anywhere.
So you know what, actually, I know that you're, on your schedule tonight is to talk about the warrant articles and take positions. Would you be willing to talk about the Complete Streets one now and take a position now?
No, we have to take it.
If you take it in the order, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
You want this chair?
I don't, no, Jan will take it. I'll surrender, surrender it to Jan.
Yeah, there's still, there's still an hour before... Pull up another one there.
They've got your slides, but do you want to project them or not?
If you have them in your package, some of them.
They have them all, yeah.
It doesn't matter if they're folks in the audience.
Actually, would it take a long time to set it up? That way he can, that way he can put it, if somebody's watching, you'll be able to put it on, yeah, so we'll go ahead and do that.
And what are we talking?
The master plan.
Master plan. So we need to swing around.
Yeah, it's green, so that means it's on.
So don't turn it on.
Jesus, it'll take 10 minutes to warm the bulb up again.
This is going to really be back, this chair.
Yeah, nice, nice new chairs. They don't sync.
You're going to have to go direct online.
Not yet.
Not yet.
If you wouldn't mind. Can you see? So, start or...
We got to project first. I think you have the other screen.
How do I change it to desktop one?
Easy way is going here, right? So come up to, where's your menu? Because then you see what they see. Where's display? Is it, there we go. Should be up there, the mirroring options. Arrangement, and mirror displays, there we go. Now you see what they see. So you can just project it, or go to the full-screen mode and...
That's okay, Jan, I have a copy of it tattooed on my right arm.
Yeah, you've heard this all before, a few dozen times. Well, it's slightly different, slightly more emphatic. So, as you know, we're, we've been working towards getting funding for the consultant, master plan consultant at Town Meeting, and so I'm just going to give a kind of reassurance of the background, the reasoning behind the fee, and why we're, why it's so important that we're doing this. And you've heard a lot of this before, but I'd just like to reiterate that the master plan is the one place where everyone comes together to talk about everyone's issues and interests and needs and topics. And it's a, an organized and formalized process where we go through everything in a rigorous way to make sure that the, the balancing act and the understanding of the trade-offs between various priorities and needs of different constituencies in town are kind of met. Many of you may have seen the presentation that John Ballantyne did as an information session about a month ago, where he, he laid out the financial demographic and school enrollment trends that are occurring. There was a really great article in The Mosquito about it, and it basically just highlights the fact that we have to do something different because we're not on a sustainable pathway. The second part of this is really important, is for the town, for town government and for, for all the various committees and volunteer groups and elected officials to have a common language around what the roadmap forward is, that in, in a laid-out way that we can understand what the, what the, what the tar, what, what our targets are, what our year, what our annual priorities are, and know how we're going to get there, what it means to get there in terms of the quantification of, of, of the metrics. So for, for example, if we have, if we have a certain kind of idea about priority projects and how many housing units we're going to try to create, or, or, I'm just making stuff up right now, you know, what we want to be doing in town center, are, you know, how we measure the success in meeting those, those, those needs, that's sort of part of this process. And then finally, the whole idea of it being an integrated effort and looking at everything together. It's the whole, the whole beauty of, of the process. The process itself is 12 months long, starting in September 2019, wrapping up in September 2020. That's at least the, what's in the RFP and what we're hoping the consultant will come back and tell us. They may, they may suggest we do it in a shorter period of time or a longer period of time. It has three phases, a data gathering and analysis phase, where we collect all the information, meet with all the different constituents, pull together all the information we have, and kind of sort it and analyze it. And the second phase then is a sort of a brainstorming, looking at best practices from other places. If there are new ideas that we haven't explored, sort of getting some insights from other towns that have been struggling with similar issues, who might have come up with innovative ways of addressing their financial or, you know, implementation challenges. And then finally, an implementation strategy where we lay out the, the conceptual cost estimates, the roles and responsibilities of who's, who's responsible for, for championing a particular initiative, what are the potential funding sources, how do we get it done, basically, and kind of lay it out, piece by piece, what changes to the zoning need to be made. So just a guidebook of, a to-do list for us. And then finally, it's a very inclusive process with a lot of public meetings, and meetings with boards and focus group meetings. The cost itself, I mean, you've, you've heard this a million times, but $160,000 is the total budget. That includes $135,000 for the consultant expend, fees, their labor and expenses. And then we are, the Planning Board suggested or asked us to include a $25,000 amount for ancillary costs to the town, and those include things like GIS mapping, community meetings, printing materials. We did a, we did a lot of research and a lot of homework, homework to come up to the 135,000, and I think, you've seen the package before in terms of our research of other towns. Basically, we're, you know, the ballpark that we're in is, is, you know, we're looking at between 143 and 277K for the master plan process, including the consultant fees as well as town staff of which we, and experts that are employed by the town, of which we don't really have. So that's Concord, Harvard, Bedford, and Boxborough are in that range. Oh, and here I have, I did this a week ago, so it's hard to keep up. So basically, Concord, their overall fee was 277K. Their, the testimonials, we've heard from their planning director, Marsha Rasmussen, you know, they're using, all the boards and committees are identifying and using this plan as they're kind of guiding. It's a kind of a collective energy now around getting things done, because everyone's on the same page. In Bedford, the, the, the plan is doing that as well as sort of guiding ongoing initiatives around housing and how to sort of look at how they're sort of reconstituting their strategy around housing, as well as it's being the basis of various zoning amendments. And theirs was 235, a lot of staff time in Bedford, but still, you know, significant chunk of change. In Boxborough, again, all the boards and committees are, are held accountable, and they, every year, they look at what, what they've managed to achieve, and it's become, in, in all of these cases, Harvard, the master plans becomes the sort of go-to book for how, how to get everybody kind of working as a collective towards a common set of goals. So we end up with a strategic roadmap that prioritizes projects and, and town priorities, and what the needs of the town are. We end up with a, and we're already seeing this, a lot of people coming out to participate, people I don't think have participated in, you know, don't usually participate in things, are coming out to voice their opinion and participate, and we expect that to only increase. Identification of the five-year priority projects, as I mentioned, with budgets and implementation steps, and updated and fully functional and fully well-organized GIS system that we can then maintain, instead of having to always worry about trying to rebuild or create. And, and then we have the basis for comprehensive policy and zoning, and we also will have the sort of conceptual basis for moving into the open space and rec planning and the housing production plans, which are all, the rec, obviously, there's, they're, they're already underway, or they're getting ready to go with open space plan, but those things will be coordinated and, and support each other's efforts. So, a lot, some people have asked why we need to hire a professional and why we can't just do this with volunteer hours. When we first started the conversation, one of the big reasons, we had that discussion, I remember in the first couple of meetings we had with the Planning Board, and that Planning Board was, was asking us to, to, to solve the problem of everyone in town being a subjective voice. So bringing someone in from outside to, to negotiate and mitigate contentious issues is something that was seen, and I, I think it's true to have someone leading the conversations who's not in the midst of it. It's a very labor, labor-intensive process that has to happen in a sort of formal and kind of defined timeline, and you can't slip, because people get frustrated. You have to get it done within a certain period of, of time before people get burned out, and there's just no way that volunteers can devote that amount of time in that amount of intensity. We've spent two years on this already, and we're estimating, we've used about 1,500 hours amongst the, all of us. So that just doesn't see, it just seems like it's important. And then, not to mention that we need professionals who have expertise in various fields. Planning is a sort of mushy field, it includes a lot of things, and different planning firms have different expertise in them. And if you don't have it in, in your, in your, within your firm, and you see it in the RFP, you team up with a subconsultant who will supplement that need. So we just don't have that level of expertise across the town. We have some of it, but not all of it. And also, planning experts work all over the place and talk to a lot of different people and see interesting things that we might not know about. So they'll bring a lot of new perspective to, to the town, to the town challenge. So that's why we need a master plan. And that's why we'd like you all to support the $160,000 warrant funding for a master plan consultant.
So when you say consultant, are you talking about, you're not talking about an individual, you're talking about a firm?
It'll be a firm, and they'll likely have sub, sub-firms with them.
Yeah, we estimate like there is going to be a team of like four to six people, you know, that, that we'd be looking at. Yep.
I've always thought up till now, we're talking about an individual.
No, I think the town has tried that before with a single kind of freelance. We're looking for RFPs to be answered by a consulting firm.
I'll get it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Anybody have any questions?
Sorry, I saw a lot of, I'm tired, I'm tired too, so...
I don't think I nodded off.
You don't remember it, anyway.
I just had one thing, and which is, I think, earlier today or yesterday, must've been yesterday, it says here in the morning, I can't remember when it was, recently. Tim mentioned that there was an, the RFP was being drafted for this. Yes. Would it be possible for us to see a copy of that?
Tim has it, right?
I have it, I have it.
Okay.
Okay, because I'd like to build a, I mean, because I think that would inform me, anyway, so much for exactly what we're getting for the $160,000. Okay, because I'd like to build a, I mean, because I think that would inform me anyway so much for exactly what we're getting for the 160 dollars. So I'd like to see that before I took a position on it anyway.
Yeah, no, I agree.
You guys think you're going to take a position on this tonight?
I don't think so. I'd like to read the RFP first.
I could, I could, so we present, we, we walk through, so the RFP draft was approved by the Master Plan Steering Committee on the 28th of March. Last night, we were in front of the planning board and walked through it and got their comments, which were relatively minor. And so our goal is to incorporate their comments by the end of the week. And we were going to share it with you guys then, I mean, we, obviously, you already have, or Tim already has it. But we can share an updated version of it.
Okay, that'd be great. That'd be great.
So, but I would like to, to kind of differentiate between the RFP and what we're asking for in town meeting. I mean, think the RFP will be a document that we can revise from now through, it doesn't have to be done by town meeting, let's put it that way. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, but I think it just informs, at least it would inform me better, a little bit better as to, like, you know, what are we, what are we getting for that 160,000 dollars, you know? I think this is really good as to why we need the master planning process. I'm fully supportive of the master planning process and, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of this. But before, you know, I like making informed decisions. So if I'm going in front of town meeting and I'm saying, yes, you know, I support this, I'd like to just have as much of the detail as I can.
What questions do you guys have? Because what I want to make sure is that we eliminate any confusion, any concerns or anything like that, you know, as we get closer and closer to town meeting. So if there's something up here that we haven't addressed, I want to make sure that we're, we know about it and we can work with you guys to, to figure out what it is and.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, you know.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think some, some concept of what the deliverables, deliverables will be for our 160,000.
Yeah, and that, that is in the RFP, that is laid out very clearly about what we expect from it. It's an action-oriented plan. It's not just a wish list, you know, I think we actually use that exact term in there. It's, it's something that's going to identify the town's needs and their wants. You know, we want to, we want, if we want a community center, it might not be a need yet, but it might be, come a need in the future, it might be want. But on top of that, we also have to, we're going to be very pushy with a consulting firm that, that this has to be coupled with funding sources and revenue streams. You know, we, we may have to develop new revenue channels and things like that to pay for these things if we want them. And it has to be a realistic, action-oriented plan that can get us from where we are now to where we want to be in 10 years, where we want to be in 20 years.
Yeah, because I think, you know, that, that would be, you know, I, I didn't think we were going to, that this is what we would get. But what I would worry about is that what we would have is a plan that said, well, we should do this and we should do this. And this is the timeline and because it's in the plan, well, that's what we should be doing. And, well, where's the money? And, you know, I mean, so, you know, it, you know, so that's, you know, that's, you know, one of the things that, you know, you kind of always worry about in these things. And I, you know, I, I know the group of people that are involved in this, I don't think that's where we're going.
Right.
But, but, you know, th- those are the types of things that you worry about, you know, kind of like these things just boom, all of a sudden out there and everybody's pointing to it and you're like, yeah, but we don't have 40 million dollars, you know.
I, I think context is going to be a good word, a big word for us when we're talking to the consultants. Everything we do, we need to do, be able to do in the context of our town and our resources, right? And so proposing that we, you know, build, you know, a 50,000 square foot community center, you know what I mean? Or something like that, probably doesn't fit our context, maybe a smaller one, maybe senior center, things like that. And then how are we paying for it? Private funding, public funding, revenue sources? We want to investigate all that, you know, as part of this, this plan.
Right.
So it's identify the goals, identify the needs, and then identify how we can do it.
So just to be, the RFP, what I outlined is a, it just goes into more detail. There's not, there aren't other things that we haven't talked about that are in here. It does talk about deliverables, but there, there are things like a master plan report. It doesn't define the chapters of the report or, you know, it doesn't define the specific, you know, the end results of the, you know, of the different topics that are in the report. It outlines a process. The process explains various things like in the, in the master plan in the second phase, or sorry, in the third phase, that we want both a, a master plan vision and framework, a kind of long-term frame, and a five-year priorities and action plan. And it describes the kinds of things we want to be looking at in that. There will, so, so, you know, it, there's more, it's more kind of, it's in a concise narrative, there's more detail. What'll happen though, once the consultants get this, is they're going to put their own words into it and, and, and give us more to, to work with. And then when we negotiate the contract with them, there'll be even more clarity around what the products are. But I would be very hesitant to define what the, the specific deliverables are in an RFP beyond a kind of a, we want to have a report. I don't know, is it going to be 100 pages or 50? I have no idea. And, and these are the things we care about and these are the steps we want to go through in the process. But I, I just want to make sure, this is, because this is one of the things that came up last night. Someone was asking to put the 81D requirements in the final deliverables. And it says in here that it's, that's part of the process and it has, that, that has to be incorporated.
I totally get that this is an RFP, it's not a statement of work, it's not part of the contract.
I just want to have it make it.
This is the RFP, the very beginning.
Don't get over, like, don't anticipate something much more information than we've already shared with you.
You know, the things we did just discuss is in kind of the prologue, you know what I mean? In the beginning about our way of thinking and what we want to get out of it. It's not saying we want the specific deliverable, but it is saying we want an actionable list. You know what I mean? That, that's in the context of our town. So the things we just discussed are in there, but like Jan said, it's not defining, you know, this is exactly how the report looks. And the other thing that we do, we summarize every issue in here and we do that on purpose. We stay away from single issues because we don't want to assume. You know, that's been a big thing from the beginning of this process is our committees stayed away from assuming what's going to be important to the town and what's not going to be important to the town. We want to let the process flush that out. So that, that's kind of the RFP, it's very, it's, I think it's very thorough from what we need to be at this phase. But it doesn't define every little piecemeal detail of what we're going to get out of this.
That would be the next phase.
Yeah, that would be the next phase.
I guess one of the other things is, is I'm assuming this will go out to bid. I mean, if we get the money, they'll be able to, and how you will decide the characteristics of the firm wins the bid. There's a fixed amount of money, so that's not going to be an issue. The issue will be who has the expertise and sensibility of what this town is like? Who can successfully fulfill this contract?
Yeah, and that's all outlined, their evaluation criteria and.
Scarring system.
The whole, the, the, you know, a detailed list of all the deadlines and dates. You know, what we're anticipating, what the requirements are for the submittal. I mean, it's all in here. I think it's the best written RFP I've ever seen.
Well, it seems like you have a draft of the RFP, you're going to have another round.
Yep.
Yeah.
But if we could share the draft now, because what we don't, we don't want to have a cycle past this cycle of reviews, do you know what I mean? So next planning board meeting, we hope to, we hope by then that I have all the feedback gathered from the planning board. We can bring it up in the public meeting, finalize it there, come to you guys tomorrow night. And we hope to have all your feedback before then on the RFP. So I think you guys can distribute it. Yeah, to them.
Yeah, and if anybody has any comments, just send them directly to Tim.
To Tim, yep.
I'd like to reinforce what Jan said though about the responses to the RFP. These firms, let's say there are six firms that respond, will each have done this multiple times. They know about the state's requirements. They've got deliverables that they've used multiple times. They'll be presenting examples of what they've done for other towns as their credentials. So the real, I think the question for us is, do we want to be involved in that process of hearing from these consultants as selectmen? What, to what extent do we want to hear what they have to say and, and interact with them? Because we're going to be sending them back after the initial interviews to finalize, you know, their, their pricing and their, and their, and their proposals. And then when they come back with those, those updated responses, then, then we'll decide which one we want to work with.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be setting up a, a selection committee that, that'll, you know, be broad, broad-based and, you know, maybe some selectmen on that, but they won't be making a presentation to the full board of selectmen. We'll have, you know, plenty of board members, other members of the steering committee and.
Fincom, we're thinking, planning board, board of selectmen, represent, representation.
To review.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And interview the finalists. Make a recommendation.
And when do we need to have, well, we don't need to have it yet.
Well, yes, right. When do we need to have it is hopefully right after town meeting is the hope, you know, so.
May 6th is.
All right, so maybe if there's going to be this, maybe on our next meeting, we should pick who might be on that.
Okay.
Not overall, but from the board of selectmen.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Boy, and again, from a process standpoint, what do you want to, what involvement do you want to have? Do you want to see copies of the proposals? Not necessarily being part of the interview process or the selection process, but you know.
I mean, we've done a lot, Carrie, I, I've been on a few of these in town. And I think normally the finalist or one or two finalists may be presented outside that selection committee, right? You know, but, but I don't, we normally don't.
They're going to have five firms then.
Right, yep.
We bring a recommendation back to the board.
Right, yep.
My question is, are the selectmen comfortable with that?
I think that we'll have one or two selectmen on this committee. And we'll have to be, you know, I, I would think anyway that we just have to be comfortable with those people representing the board of selectmen. Do you agree with that, Carrie?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All right, very great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you doing this one?
I am.
You're going to move over there?
No, I am not.
Okay, so we're moving on to our 845, which is the town meeting warrant article for the Community Preservation Committee.
So I think this is like my 47th year as chair of CPC. I did give it up for you. So anyway, we have four projects this year that we're going to recommend.
We're looking in the.
Oh, so it's Article 22? Yeah, of, of what came out. So motion one is always the budget. There was like 11 and a half percent match this year, so not great, but still, any money is better than no money. So we always appropriate at least 10% of the three buckets, so 54.5 is what those are. We actually are going to appropriate more to the administrative expenses this year and I'll explain that in a minute. And then the 361.5, that's the balancing number. So that technically that goes into the reserve account and then that's the money that next fiscal year turns into undesigned. Those funds can, those funds can be used, but typically we're very stingy with those, just so we don't spend it all in one year. So there are four projects this year. I think we only had four applications. No, no, we had five.
What, I'm sorry, what's the amount that we have in each of the buckets right now?
Oh, boy, I don't think I brought that. Off the top of my head, there's like 200,000 in historic. There isn't much in open space because we spent that with the Woodward property. So maybe there's 50,000 in there. There's like four and change in housing.
For what?
Like 400 and some thousand.
Not 4,000.
No, 400 and some thousand. And it might be closer to five in housing and then around a million, 1.2 in. Undesignated, yeah. Yeah, or actually, it might be around 800,000. Yeah, it's around 800,000, eight to nine, I think, in undesigned, because we use the funds. Yeah, we would have had 1.2, but we used the reserve fund last year to pay for the Woodward. The, the purchase of the open space, yeah. Yeah, the land.
And that, that's before the 361 or after the 361 is put in there?
So the 360.
These balances that you're giving us, is that before you allocated these funds or?
Yeah, so that's before.
Before, so.
Right, so another 54 will go in, 54, 54, correct.
So if we had a million two, we now have a million five.
Exactly, exactly, yep. But I think, I honestly, I think that's eight and change. I think it'll bring it up to 1.2 with the 361, yeah. Yeah, because we try to keep it around that and then it always bumps up to the 1.2-ish. But because we did spend it on the Woodward purchase, that, that changes that number. So four projects that we're going to bring to town meeting this year. One, excuse me, so motion two, it's a continuation of the project that Charlene started for the preservation of the town records. Mary has continued to do this. She actually brought some of the materials that have been preserved. It's really amazing to look back in some of these books and see, you know, the handwriting, it's phenomenal. So there's still a, a huge number of materials from 1754 to 1935. So this is the 16,571 is going to do a few of those. She has a more itemized list of what, what some of these things cost, because it did all go out to bid. And then there's one preservationist, preservationist, is that how you say? That he did the previous ones and he gave estimates on all of these. So Hiscom, so one of the things with historical funds and historical preservation is that Hiscom actually has to approve it as either being historically significant to Carlisle or it's got to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Obviously, records can't be, but Hiscom has approved all of these documents as being historic to the town. So it's allowable out of the historic.
Are they the sponsor of the application?
No, so it's actually the town clerk.
The town clerk, okay.
Yep, yep. The second one is $15,000 for the Trails Committee to come out of the Open Space Reserve Fund. They, so they asked for money, I think it was seven years ago. And it was $15,000. And what they do is they use this money to pay to either create new boardwalks. So on some new conservation land, if new land is required. Or if some of them have fallen into such disrepair that they need to be replaced. That's what they use these funds for. And it's strictly materials. You know, the Trails Committee, they do an amazing job with, you know, keeping these trails functional. So this, this really ends up being that and it's just emphasized, so CPA funds cannot be used for maintenance. So they don't use this to replace a couple of boards on a, a boardwalk here or there. This is if it's become completely unusable or, or they need a new one. So it's allowable. Motion four is $9,000 for the Open Space and Recreation Plan. So every, is it five years? I think, yeah, the, the town needs to do an OSNR plan. This is actually, so the 9,000 is going to be pulled out of the CPA administrative funds. Ultimately, it's all the same money anyway. But, but we conferred with council on this and we were originally going to take it out of the open space fund. But there's this whole non-supplant clause, right? Which basically is if town funds could be used to pay for something like this or town funds should be used to pay for something like this, you're not supposed to use CPA funds. They just, they don't want you supplementing the town budget with CPA funds, which, you know, a lot of towns have done in the past. We've been pretty good at making sure we don't. And they went back and forth with people at DOR, or DCR, DCR, Department of Conservation, DCR. You know, to see exactly how this should be paid for. And ultimately, because we put together a community preservation plan, I think our last one was 2016, so we need to update that. But we put together a community preservation plan and one of the things is we ask committees and different groups to, especially historic, conscom, and housing, you know, to give us a plan so we can do long-term projections. And, and this was part of, or I guess council felt that this, and DCR, felt that, you know, this was an appropriate way to do it because we will use this plan. this was an appropriate way to do it because we will use this plan because there's rankings of properties in that plan, you know, in terms of value to the town and value in terms of open space preservation, that sort of thing. So we are going to use administrative funds for that if the town votes to move it forward. Oh, okay. You had a quizzical look on your face when, trying to mix things up for you at the town meeting. And then the last one is, I know Sylvia and Angie have come to the board in the past. This is actually for the restoration of Greeno Dam. So Greeno Dam is an absolute mess, and the spillways are washing out, and it's becoming a liability. So they have requested state funds, so there is a grant program for dams. The Office of Dam Safety has this program, and it turns into this long-term, you might know better.
The state funding?
Yeah.
It's in the environmental bond bill from last year?
Yep.
It was $200,000 toward the restoration of Greeno Dam. It's in earmarking and bond bills, so it's real money if you can break it loose from the state's coffers. That's kind of the trick, but it's an existing appropriation.
Right. Right. So, yeah, we're optimistic that those funds are going to be released at some point soon. But ultimately, they, they being Conscom, it's gotten to the point where we can't necessarily rely on that. So the goal with this one is we'll appropriate 300,000 with the hope that over the next year, we can push and nudge and pry that money from the state. So this project won't have to start right away. Ultimately, though, it probably needs to get rolling before next town meeting because there's permitting and all of that stuff that's been done. And they have talked with the Army Corps of Engineers, so permits can always be extended. But, you know, if it becomes clear at some point within the next year that we are not going to get those state funds, you know, we really have to do something. So that's why it's the 300,000. Ultimately, if we do get the state funds, you know, prior to the work being completed or prior, you know, prior to the work starting, then the whole 300,000 wouldn't be used, you know.
Can you go back?
Right, at least that 200,000 would be, would be put back, so.
And so this is coming from historic?
So part of it, no. So part of it would be coming from historic and potentially.
Why historic?
Potentially. So the state has actually, there was a letter from the state that stated it was a historic, of historic significance to the state and to the town. While that doesn't really matter in terms of CPC, Sylvia is trying to get the Hiscom, and I just got the text from her earlier because I asked her earlier today, that she's going to Hiscom tomorrow to see if they will vote to determine if the dam is of historical significance to the town. So if they do that, then the funds can be used. One of the reasons is the committee thought that we should, if we can use historic funds, we should use a portion, it'll only be 50,000 would be, that's what the committee voted. It would be 50,000 of the 300,000, is that there's a large amount in that bucket, and ultimately, it's easier to spend undesigned than it is out of a specific bucket. So if a specific bucket can be used for a project, then. You know, so if Hiscom came back and, you know, they had 150,000, but they had a $200,000 project, you can always pull from undesigned. But if, you know, housing comes and, you know, they need 500,000, right, you can't pull from historic. You know what I mean? So you try to use the buckets as much as possible because we're forced to put that money in. But again, I mean, you don't want to stretch it. So we did go back and forth quite a bit on this. And, you know, and Kathy, Kathy Keller, she's the Hiscomra, and she said that, you know, it's, the Hiscom is generally supportive, but until they actually take that vote, we don't know. So that's why it's written in here as the appropriate bucket.
So this may change.
It may change, yeah.
And who owns number four? Who sponsored that? Is it Conscom or is it Recreation? Or like, is there a team working on that one?
Yeah, so Conscom is the, they were the applicant, but they're doing it in conjunction with CPA because technically we're, since it's our administrative funds. But that is always a committee, a town committee is put together. You know, David Freeman's been running that, I think, for a while. You know, Steve Hinton is going to do the GIS mapping, and I think Pete, he said he would help. Maybe not necessarily help, but.
The administrative part of the GIS.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, so it's typically, there are very few outside consultants with that. Sometimes there's GIS, but since we're going to try to bring that in-house, you know, it should be significantly cheaper.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think last time it was done, it was in the $14,000 range. So now to try to bring more stuff in-house, it'll be, we probably won't even hit the nine. I think the original application was for 15. We got it down to nine, and I think it'll, I think it'll end up being cheaper than that. Because some of it too is, you know, it's just rerunning the same maps, and we're going to use the same artwork and that sort of thing, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you. Victor. How are you doing tonight?
I'm doing good. How are you?
All right. So you guys all done with your recommendation? You still?
We are done with our recommendations, and we haven't finished on all the financially related articles yet.
Okay.
Done some. I'll go through the ones that we have. Fill this up in case you want additional numbers.
That's your recommended budget.
Thank you. Just make sure that number is.
204 million, right? That's the.
Yeah. Whatever things float around with paper and electronic copy, just double check that bottom number.
Oh, I was going to say, I was looking for that.
So just open this up in case you want to get into any other detail that's not on there. So here you see the total budget, operating budget here is about $31 million. You can get the exact amount in the back, $31,871. It wasn't materially different than when we last reviewed this with you. It's kind of tweaking around the edges. Amounts to a 3.7% increase when you don't factor into the situation where we have some debt coming off of the books. If you kind of factor that out, it's 4.23% increase over the prior year. Revenue, I can double check this with, I'm sorry?
Is this without COLA?
Yep. This is with COLA.
This is with COLA.
This includes everything.
I'm sorry, so it's 4.3% if we, 4.23, right?
Yep, so we have some debt coming off.
If we don't count the debt coming off.
Yeah. Yeah, which, we're going to add more debt, as you're going to see from some of the warrants.
It's a 4.23% increase.
Yes, it is.
Great, okay.
Revenue, and I can, I can phone a friend because Bonnie's in the back to make sure I got the right number off of it. It looks like just shy of 1% in terms of increase across all sources, 0.93%, so not a whole lot of increase in terms of, which is expected. That goes in the letter pretty much every year. Not much increase in revenue, and yet our budget continues to increase year over year. And that, that leads to obviously the comment that we have is that this is something that we need to continue to actively manage in terms of the increases. As you know, that the big driver on those increases is the schools, right? So I think that's a big portion of that. What we did also discuss is free cash. We allocated 250,000 of free cash to support the long-term capital request warrant. That leaves us, and we kind of worked, worked the numbers the other way to ensure that we have enough reserves between free cash and stabilization to maintain about 10.8% of the budget, which is roughly the same as last year. Typically want to be between about 10 and 12%, so we're kind of smack in the middle between that. So I think the other comment, comment that I'd make here is that if all of the warrants pass, that it's a fairly, a very sizable sum. So that's where there would be additional concerns on that.
Any idea as to what that sizable sum would be?
Yep, I can pull, pull that up. Warrants. Long-term cap requests, looking at this one, is 280,000 separate articles, another 356. And then that's also already incorporating the fact that we're actually putting some things into debt and excluded debt as well. It's already factoring that in. So things such as DPW, some of the items under DPW move to debt.
So what's that, what's the percentage increase if everything passes?
Percentage increase of everything, that's a good question. Let me add that all up for you here. I can add that up.
So we have not done our job this year?
Exactly. Holding the budget, well, yeah, I mean, I think that's. I think that's the challenge, it's just water. That's a challenge that we've always set, you know, you have essentially contracts, you have healthcare, you have schools. I think those are all things that, you know, within the departmental budgets, we held them fairly tight.
But last year, we were like, in the end, didn't we end up like just a little over 2% in?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
So this is like 2%, this is double.
Yeah, I don't remember if that had, that factored in debt at the end. I have to go back and look at those numbers.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's any debt that came off the books last year either.
Okay. Do Town Clerk and Conservation, do they include the increases?
They did not include the increases in these numbers.
Okay, so the salary.
We held to, if you go back to September, we sat at the table and said we're holding to the end of January, that all those things need to be sifted out. So they did attend, it wasn't the last meeting, the previous meeting, and that was essentially what we said. You know, everything needs to be through Board of Selectmen and the Personnel Board by the end of, end of January. And I think we are, I think that also says, you know, they didn't, it wasn't like previous years where people started late in the process. They, both of them started early. I think that goes to say that, you know, this whole aspect of the process and getting through and making sure we're, the agendas, you know, obviously get kicked down the, kicked down the lane when you can't get quorums and things like, it's a problem. We need to, we need to address that.
Yep.
Because it's not, it wasn't fair to them, but at the same token, if we, we let it, let it pass through, then we're never going to, we're not trying to address the problem.
And is this, I'm looking at the second page here.
Yep.
So are we, is this, this is saying we're going to do an additional $50,000 towards OPEB this year?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Sorry, second page, just make sure I got the number.
Third one down?
Yep, additional 50.
So it'll be paying 425,000 towards it.
Yep.
And that's kind of been the plan all along, right?
Yeah, we need to continue to increase it. So we, I think last year was 75, if I remember correctly. This year was 50.
How much do we have there now in total?
That's a good question. I had, I have that number here in the letter. Yeah. Just pull up the, there's a number around what we continually hold in terms of owing, the memo that I wrote.
Insurance and fringe is killing us.
I'm sorry?
Insurance and fringe is killing us.
Yep.
And why such a big increase in the regional school district?
Regional?
Yeah. Oh, that was the OPEB that they wanted to?
Yep. I believe that was.
That's 300,000, 250,000?
Yeah. I don't remember the exact number, but that was one of the big, big numbers that we asked them to consider.
I mean.
Given the fact that I think it was, it amounted to about a 5, 5% increase over the prior year.
5.6.
Yep. So five and.
The net service is down 40K, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but not for long if they pass their warrant article.
Yes, and that was one of the positions we took. We do not support that warrant article as it, as it's written. It combines both the roadway, which has some safety, safety items in there with the parking lot. So because they're together, we discussed that, and we do not support that.
They're still together. They've reduced the amount to about 1.7 million, and it's being voted tonight.
Yeah, I was, I was watching on TV. I didn't, I didn't know which number it was in the warrant, which, which article it was. But the amount that was reduced was actually not the parking lot. The amount that was reduced was the roadway. So the contention is the parking lot, right? Is that really a necessary thing given everything else?
Yeah, it had, what, $8,000 a parking spot or something?
So fringe went up about 250,000. Education went up 686,000.
Yep, now it's split roughly equally between the public school and Concord Carolina Regional School District, because about 300, 350 each in that increase.
Yeah, and fire's increase was the chief salary, essentially.
Yep, the chief salary.
It's frustrating because, you know, we're out there chasing the 5,000 and the 10,000s, and then there's these 300,000s that we have no control over.
Yeah, right.
You know, and we just can't catch up that way.
That's right. And some of that's not even finalized yet, right?
Good to see street lighting though, the LEDs are there.
Sorry, Kerry's, what was that, Kerry?
A little over 100K. How much do we have to borrow to get back to have it cost us another 100K? What's, what's that number look like in terms of new stuff?
I don't know if you can do that calculation in your head, Bonnie. So about 100, 100,000's coming off of debt? How much do we need to borrow to kind of get, increase that back to 100,000?
Well, it depends on how you want to borrow it. I mean, it's, you know, if you borrow a million dollars and pay it down at 10% in advance annually, you'll heat up 100,000 dollars.
Very fast.
Well, knowing what, you know, the types of things that run the long-term capital warrants with the police station and the, and the clinic and the parking lot, I mean, what would that look like in terms of additional debt service?
So for next year, the impact of all of the borrowing that we're looking to do, which would include the school parking lot, salt shed, all of the facility needs, the, some borrowing for the wood chipper, fuel tank, septic tank, septic replacement, a pickup truck, and the DPW trailer, that's going to cost about $37,000, just in, in interest and short-term payments for next year. The 2021 impact.
The police station, right?
No, that's not the police station. The police station's going to cost about $130,000 next year. And that's just for a one-year ban because we want to roll that until we do the construction costs too and issue it all together.
Yeah. Actually, this is on the last page. I didn't flip to the last page, I was just looking at the first two. Kerry?
This is just showing what it is next year.
That's right.
Right.
Well, she has a footnote, she has a footnote for the separate articles. FY '21 is 180,000. So you've already, you've already filled it back up, 2021.
Yeah, and 2021.
More.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just missed, you know, you look at this and you think, oh, well, you know, $37,000 for these things, that's not bad, but actually next year, it's 180,000.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to go home.
Yeah.
Okay. And so the 4.3, 4.23 includes nothing on the second page, on the, on the third page.
Correct.
All right?
Hey, you're really ready to go.
All right, well, I think this is what we really need to be thinking about when we're going through these articles.
Yep. Yep.
And so has the FinCom taken a position on the articles?
Some of them, um, like I said for.
Care to share which ones?
Concord Carlisle Regional School District, we did not support that, um, Article 9, budget transfers.
I'm sorry, one second, let me just.
You have that in front of you?
Yeah, so the school parking lot, reads, uh, Article 26 was a no?
Yep. It's at 31, right? Or did the numbers change? Regional.
I'm sorry, 26 is the Carlisle one.
31, I have 31.
Yeah, 31 or CCHS.
31.
He had an idea about that.
There you go.
There you go.
Yep.
All right.
And helmets.
Fit more in a parking space, is that what it is?
Yeah. Did you, did you, uh, take a stance on Article 30?
30, we did not.
Okay. Did you take a stance on the, uh?
So I can go through the ones we did, so the number nine, the budget, cause there wasn't many, um, number nine, budget transfers. These are all su- support. Special appropriations, 11.
So you're supporting number nine?
Yep, 9, 11, uh, 14 is long-term caps, and municipal appropriation was an interesting one. So I, I saw that you made note that, um, we hadn't taken a position. In my notes, I had it that we didn't take a position, but in Lynn's notes, so I have to double check with, with both. Circulate it, but those are on, on, we didn't, we have not reviewed and approved those minutes yet.
So I'm sorry, but you said that you did approve, uh, you did support the long-term caps request, the 279,000?
14.
Yes.
Article 14.
Article 14.
So you, yeah, so fully?
Yes.
That's the long-term caps, 372, 413.
And then that was it. 15's in question.
I'm sorry. We, that number doesn't match what's on your third page here.
Which one?
Uh, your third page for long-term caps is 279, 413?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
But in here we have 372, 413.
That's because some of these got moved to debt.
Debt.
Okay.
Did we ever get clarity on that 80,000 for the technology replacements at the school? Because there's already money in their budget for it, this is a supplement to that.
Yeah.
And it's in there every year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Do we?
I'll have to go back to the, the minutes. I seem to recall that we did, um, but I'll have to go back and check the minutes.
So.
I'm just curious, I mean, cause it's.
It's kind of a placeholder that carries over.
Yeah, exactly, right, and do they always need that, or, you know, what happens if we don't do it one year?
Mm-hmm.
Right, you know?
It's a fair one.
Okay, um, so what happens to that 100,000 dollars? Where is it? Where, where is it found in our budget? This 100,000 dollars that's been moved to debt?
So, instead of funding it through cash, um, we're funding it in the debt service budget, so it's part of this 36,000, um, at the bottom.
On the bottom.
Okay.
So you can see the, um,
Yeah, I see in there.
The one-ton pickup and the wood chipper are moved down here.
Okay, and so what article does that become?
That becomes part of the, um, operating budget, you're gonna approve it here.
Right.
So you still need to approve the full 300 and.
So it's still gonna say 372,000 dollars?
Yes, but it's gonna say we're gonna borrow for these two items and appropriate for the other.
Borrow, yeah.
Got it, I, I was trying to figure out where that 100,000, I thought this number was gonna go down.
No.
It's not, okay. All right. All right, so is that all that you supported so far?
That is it.
So what I had is number nine, number 11, number 14, and number?
And that's it.
31 was a no.
31 was a no.
And that's, that's all the ones that you have?
It is. We do, do not plan to take positions until, like we typically do for many of them, right before, um, the meeting.
Okay.
We have one more meeting, um, well, it's a budget hearing, so we'll have the budget hearing on the 22nd, uh, we also have, um, planning for will be, um, 7, yes, 7:30 or 8. But it's posted, I can't remember the number. Yeah.
So do you support number 10?
Number 10? Oh, yes, that was approved, okay.
How about 16?
16, which num, which one was that one?
The fuel spill remediation.
Yeah.
Oh, we did not, we did not take a position on that one. I think it was getting late. It was already past 10:30.
I think by law we'd have to.
Yeah. Yeah.
16? I'm sorry.
Page 9.
Oh, uh, well, there's some good news on that.
Yes. The number's coming down.
It's coming way down, and in fact, there, uh, I talked to Tim about it, um, today and about how to go forward with it. We, they're, they're still writing the plan, so we don't still know what it, the cost will be for this year.
Yeah.
But we're expecting it to be in a $10,000 range.
Oh, great.
For this year, but it might be the kind of plan where it says, you have to pass twice a year for the next n years, so it might be 10,000 a year for the next 10 years. So the question would be, do we ask for 20,000 for this year and next year, so that we can then have a plan for how to go forward after that with, you know, the water quality subcommittee?
Yep. And in, in large, I mean, there's a, a method behind the, some of the madness here in terms of, you know, one is, it was late and we had gone through, uh, only a few of these. But the other aspect is some of these types of things, if you only come in at 10,000, uh, for the remediation, then it's about prioritization, right, the overall number. So once some of the other numbers become a little more firm, other things that we think are kind of outstanding, um, become more firm, then I think might change some of these things. So we kind of hold on to the positions on some things.
So.
So that one's good.
Okay.
At least 10.
But then we, we also, the, the municipal facilities committee then wants some guidance from somewhere about, you know.
To do for the next year for testing and things like that, yes.
Yes, yeah, so that.
And I ask only because it's, stands out as the only one that goes down.
Mm-hmm.
Why do communications go down?
Communications.
It's a good question. Let me take a look at that.
Where's that, Alan?
On, put the first page under protection.
Oh, it's $5,000?
Protection.
I don't know, I have to, I have to look that up. If that catches your eye, 5,000 is, is the thing that catches my eye, the 300,000 increase is what catches my eye.
I just, I just was, I was looking, everything went up.
It's, it's only the 5,000 ones that we can change.
Exactly, exactly. Somehow we squeezed 5,000 dollars out of that one.
All right, so I don't know, I'm, you know, uh, 4.23, my whole thought about a lot of this has just changed fundamentally. Every time I look at the number, it doesn't change.
17.
With the police station.
Oh, with the police station.
We just didn't discuss it. It was, it was late and, um, we wrap up our meeting.
So, um, so it's, it's, I gue- I guess one of the things that, um, I'm struggling a little bit is, is a little bit kind of, some of the process, I guess, um, and, you know, and, and I don't want to pick on any one committee, but it, it's kind of like, we didn't really see a whole lot of what was going on on the municipal facilities, like what those numbers were until pretty late to be able to start to, to try to figure out what we might need to do, um. And, uh, I think the other one was the, the long-term caps, I think.
Yeah.
Was, we didn't get that until, I think just two weeks ago, right, was our, our first view of it, it was always just kind of an empty thing before then. I think somehow, you know, like we've done with the personnel, you know, changes, I think we need to push some of these things, um, earlier so that we understand the impact on things, you know, cause if I look at the municipal facilities one, there, there's, there's some in there that I don't support at all. And there's some that I do support, and, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't know how we best deal with that. I mean, not that my supporting or not supporting is the be-all and end-all, but, um, you know, it's, it's just a shame to have like, a whole thing not go through because people, you know, don't want a few things that might be in something.
Right.
And, and we haven't had the opportunity to have those discussions.
Yep. So you're thinking is that having discussions earlier, um, you may choose to exclude certain things that does, doesn't seem to have support? So that the article is looking at.
Yeah, or, or that, looking at, looking at 4.23, right, you know, not, I'm not saying that there's anything in here that isn't, doesn't have merit to need to get done.
Oh, it's prioritization.
It's just a prioritization, and if we're looking at a 4.23% increase without any of these other things.
Right.
Which is, you know, a total of, I mean, it's, it's a total of, what, 750,000 dollars in total? More?
I mean, uh, versus last year?
Well, cause I'm not just looking, I'm, I'm looking at the 2021 number.
Oh, you're looking at 2021.
On the bottom one, right, because that's what it's gonna cost us next year.
Right.
Yeah.
So you have to add, you have to add the, the 180 and the 130 and the 3.
Oh, yeah. Yep, so you're reversing the 100,000 by adding up those other ones.
Right.
Yep. So it is more, right? In net, it is gonna be more than the 4.23 that I had there. Just not in FY '20.
Right, not in FY '20.
Yeah, see, that's, that's why it's taken out, cause it's not.
No, but, but that's, but only this is taken out, none of this stuff is taken out, right? So, you know, we're still adding 5, 600, 700.
It's about 6.
7. Isn't it over 700,000?
7, 7 and change. Oh, wait a second. Let me sum these up. 1, 2, 3. So for next year, all the warrants would add up, if the impact, 802.
802, right. And that's just for next year?
Yep. It jumps up to the following year.
We have to live with it the next year where it's gonna hurt us.
Next year it'll jump to a million.
We can't do all these things that are on here.
Nope, that's what we've said, yeah.
We, we, we're gonna have, we're gonna, we will have to make some, some really hard decisions, and what I worry about is that it's inside some of these things, like, you know, I, I, I don't think we can do a salt shed.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, you know, I, I think, I think that, you know, we're gonna have to make really, really hard decisions about what do we do this year and what do we, what do we consider in a future year? You know, or, or kind of why have we been?
Yeah.
Why have we been so tough with the budget for the last, you know, years, if we're, we're just gonna blow it all in one year if we do all these things?
That was our exact discussion, that, um, many of these things are due to not maintaining or keeping up with things for many, many years, but then, you know, over the next three years, we anticipate trying to fix all of them, right?
Right, we can't.
We can't, and that's the exact comments that came up in our, just in our last meeting.
Right.
Of course, some of them are mandated.
Yeah, you know, fuel spills and tanks, right, we have to do that.
Yeah, but as we go through these things, as, as we go through these things, we'll know those, right?
Right, well.
And, and it could be that all we can do is the mandated ones.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, like 120,000 for a salt shed, that's a big ticket item. You know, and that would.
Yeah, and you might look at this and say, oh, well, it's only, you know, 6,000 a year, but it's actually not only 6,000 a year, it's only 6,000 this year.
Next year, yeah, this year.
And, and then it's a lot of money, and 6,000 is a lot of money.
Right.
Oh, my goodness. 4.23 is without the long-term, the standard long-term caps.
Yeah, without warrants.
Without warrants.
So, was long, yeah.
I'm just double checking.
Yeah.
It's without warrants.
It's without warrants, so at long-term caps, is one of the warrants.
It's listed on the warrants page, so.
That would be, uh, long-term caps.
280,000.
280. It's number 14.
Yeah, and did you say what it would be if all the warrants passed?
802, 123.
802 for FY '20, and then you had, it's at least a million. Close to a million plus.
Yeah, and then, but then, I mean, some of it's gonna go on even beyond that, right?
Yep.
Police Department.
But it's gonna go higher.
Yeah, it's gonna go higher, yeah. Yeah, I mean, and this is one of the things that I don't think people necessarily think about.
I understand, but what I would like to be able to do is, if the town is gonna have to sacrifice again, can we not ask the school to also make some sacrifice?
Well, I think you guys made a slice across, yeah. Yeah.
75.
Right, so there's a 75,000 dollar cut.
And we did not, um, my, my recollection is often very poor, but I'm pretty sure that, I, I know actually, that they came back and asked for 33.
Of the 75.
Yeah, because there's, uh, this aspect of, of having reserve for, like, special ed situations, and said, well, we'll deal with it when that comes up.
Deal with it when it comes back, yeah.
Well, but of the long-term caps, 120, 135, about 140,000 dollars, oh, wait, 150,000. 155,000 dollars of the long-term caps of the 372 of schools. On top of their budget.
Yep. You're looking, yeah, let me see.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's why I said that 80,000, I'd like to know what the technology replacement is, because, I mean, ultimately, if we're replacing iPads every two years, maybe we can squeeze a third year once. You know, I mean, or, whatever it is, I, you know, and, and.
Double check the, the.
Yeah, cause that'd be really nice, I mean, the fire alarm upgrade, I think that's, Jesus, that's all you see in the mosquitoes, is the police reported to have messed up fire alarm and, you know, so I, that's probably needed, you know, painting.
That's actually something else, the simplex fire alarm system, it's not.
Oh, so it's not, it's not that? So what is that?
It's just the, um, um, broadcast in, in the building, it's what, there are apparently some rooms that are not getting, receiving the signals.
Oh.
Can't hear them.
Oh, well, you need.
So it's not going, it's not what's going to the.
But you need signals of rooms, right?
Fire Department.
No.
So it's certainly a matter of health, safety.
Yeah.
So if we were to prioritize as, on the basis of health, safety and welfare, simplex fire alarm definitely stays in, but painting and ceiling replacement, I'm not so sure.
Yeah.
Um.
You know, and even stuff like that, I, you know, I, I, my guess is that that's probably gonna get contracted out, you know, is that something that they could do in-house?
They're actually doing part of it, we've already cut it back.
Have you?
Yeah. Yeah.
See, well, this is part of not being a long-term.
Trimmed it, it was a way bigger ask before.
But see, this is, this kind of goes to Nathan's point, like, we have no visibility in any of these, cause we've only, we only had the one presentation from Jerry and, you know.
Oh, are you talking, now you're in, uh.
Long-term caps. No, long-term, cause it's still Jerry, right?
No, Scott.
Oh, that was Scott, okay. Yeah, what's Jerry on now?
Jerry's municipal.
Oh, okay, he's specifically, yeah. Finance guy's gotta stop moving around.
Yeah, it's, and for the fire department, the protected clothing washer and dryer are very important for safety, cause they're washing chemicals out of their gear.
But you know, again, the computer replacements, right?
Well, and then, then, so the biggie, you know, that kind of glaring one is 80K.
The 20K for the fire department, don't they have four?
20K for the.
Isn't there 20, maybe I'm.
For what, I'm sorry, oh, computers?
Well, the computers.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's two.
No.
Yeah, it's two, but I mean, you know, we, uh, you know, again, it's, you know, and then like, police, obviously 8,000 for computer, are those the ones in the cruisers? Are those?
Yeah, those are, I think, the ones.
They're not the ones in the cruisers, right, so.
So. I mean, I think what we could do tonight is go through the non-financial ones and take a position on them, so that at least we have that done. Um, and then come back around and see if we can close out any of the financial ones.
Yeah, so I mean, ultimately, how does it work for long-term caps, is that, that's a done deal, like, we can't pull the salt shed out now?
Well, a salt shed is a different one.
That was municipal.
That was municipal facilities or whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think, Wayne, could we, would we be able to do a separate motion within an item?
Yeah.
Since it's already in.
Which, which article?
So we're looking at the facility, municipal facilities. You know, those numbers were just actually put in there recently after.
Fifteen, I think.
Uh, yeah, fifteen. I mean, do we have to accept that?
See what your latest motion is.
The motion would not have to include all of these items.
Right.
No.
Yeah, it says, said projects shall, may include.
Yes, right.
Right, but only, we don't want to end up with that same number on the bottom.
Right.
Right. Oh, I see what you're saying, yep.
Your, you know, the basic, the basic rule is you can go up slightly from the number that's in the paragraph, the three ninety-two, six ten. You could go up if you wanted, and you can go a little bit, and you can go down as far as you want below it.
Okay.
Okay, well, they want to go down, low.
Yeah, so you're, you're fine to move thirty-nine thousand instead of three hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Okay.
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 Okay, and that, and, but that doesn't necessarily mean that if the, I'm just trying to clarify. So if the municipal facilities got the now, uh, two hundred and seventy-two thousand instead of three hundred and ninety-two thousand, but they decided that really it was a high priority to replace the salt shed, but not to replace the trailer, they could still do that, is that?
Yes.
Because you're not taking.
You may have run out of power or something. Hey, Carrie.
Hi, I'm sorry, I got lost.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll leave you blank.
Yeah, let me, let me. We unplugged you because we're cutting costs.
Budget's too high.
Yeah, budget's too high. But also, too, there's a fifteen percent contingency, right? So that one twenty is actually what? One, what's that, eighteen?
Yeah.
To one thirty-eight, right?
Right.
So I mean, you know, there, there's that, too.
But the way it's worded, they could, they could reprioritize that. Essentially saying that.
But they could, it would be interesting, though, since we've said, no, we don't want to spend money on the salt shed. It would be, it would be risky.
What, what's in their charter? I mean, do we? They don't have to come to us for approval, right? But they're, they're recommending these projects, they're not.
Right.
Yeah, this is that whole.
But they have spending.
And, and the motion that goes before the meeting, you know, there's a lot to say about that, too.
Yeah.
Now, and then you could meet with the committee and say, we're happy moving one, three and five, but none of the rest of it.
Yeah.
It could be that kind of a decision.
We just can't move all of this stuff.
No.
Well, it's one of, and the one twenty is one of the few things that's on that list that is not really directly health, safety and welfare. Rather, the other things really are for health and safety of our employees. You could argue that, you know, the salt is for the safety of the town, but.
But, but they'll have salt.
But they'll have salt.
They'll have salt. It's not that we won't have salt.
Right.
I mean, the other one is, you know, I'm just, the police station. Eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, do we do that this year? Spending a lot on the police department.
Yeah, and the police department, that's one of those things where it was part of that, the, you know, the full review. And we've been out of compliance, and most towns are out of compliance, right? We've been out of compliance for years, so we don't get that.
Just to be clear, it's not, it's, it's not like it's, you know, as I understand it, we're out of compliance of this particular certification.
Exactly, 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 right, we're not.
Other than that, I mean, it's not.
No, 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 it's not dysfunctional.
Right.
There's this, right, there's a certification that's certain.
I'm going to push back on that a little bit. Again, there are some safety issues that are being addressed in this.
Yes, but, but what we were talking about was the compliance and non-compliance.
All right, but if you, okay, so it's one of these domino things. If you, if you address the safety issues, then that triggers, you know, the next step. That's okay. So sometimes you can't do a half a project, you have to do.
He's on here.
I thought you wanted me to try and bring him back, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Are you there?
Yep.
Okay, so you can.
No, it's just.
No, I agree with you on that one, seventeen, yeah.
Hey, young. Police station would be excluded then as well, subject to a ballot question in addition.
That's a two-thirds.
Right.
Yeah.
Totally get it, it's, it's still, it's still money. It's still money.
Yeah.
And we're already at four point two three.
On the salt shed, I talked to the guys negotiating with Amaraesco on the solar, and they said it would be very easy to build a solar salt shed if you will. If they're going to do that, they might as well kill two birds with one stone if they can. So, that's just a, it's a, it's a potential other solution to, to it. It certainly wouldn't take place this year, or maybe even the next, but it's a longer term, better solution.
But according to this, the salt shed is only in here at six thousand this year. Municipal facilities thing is in at a hundred and twenty, but here you moved it to debt.
Right.
So it's not a hundred and twenty.
Not a hundred and twenty, we're going to borrow for it, so you'll pay six thousand next year and then.
A lot more the following year.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
We have to talk about where it's, you know, when I look at the numbers.
Yeah.
They don't come out right.
No.
I mean, so, I mean, it seems to be like Article sixteen we kind of have to do, right?
Well, and it's not a hundred thousand, so.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
And Article eighteen, maybe we have to rewrite that so that we're growing and selling the marijuana, so we don't pay for all this stuff.
We got a cranberry bog.
Could you rewrite that?
That's coming out of the long term, the, the master plan, that's what they're going to propose.
I think it's coming out of the cranberry bog.
And we can sell it out of the Highland Building.
Didn't you all park at the school?
Yeah.
In the, in the new parking lot.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
So how about Article twenty-one? Anybody have any? I'm just trying to get something done tonight.
I don't even have, I had nineteen twenty.
Public Safety Communication Tower lease.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was, I thought it was a no, no brainer. What page is that on, please?
That's twenty.
Oh, here it is, page twenty.
Do you want a motion? Someone can do it?
Well, I just want to kind of go through and just kind of get a feel for. So you guys don't normally even take, take a position on Article four, you know, the, the consent agenda? All right.
Twenty-seven is the farm by right. I suppose we should take a position on. Twenty-eight is dog license. Then it grows. The other money one is Article thirty, the Spalding.
So, I was at Spalding the other day.
Yeah.
And there were two new sinkholes, one of them was easily three and a half feet deep, and the other one was a foot and a half. It's a mess. You know, and so, and somebody's going to get hurt.
If we line it with clay, we could have a pool.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
Well, just trash the wetlands in.
Oh, there you go, we don't even have to, yeah. Yeah, okay.
So, you know, I, I honestly, I, something needs to be done there, because it really is going to become.
And it's not being, it's not being funded by CPC, because they're talking about a turf, possibly a turf, and CPC, I mean, what is that up with that?
So, no, so, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly why they didn't come to CPC. Drew did say about the turf piece, right? Because they would want to make one of the fields turf, potentially. And CPC won't fund turf. They'll fund all the infrastructure around it, the drainage, all of that, but, but not the actual turf. So I think, for the, the sake of cleanliness, it was, the idea was that they would try to fund this, you know, unrestricted, ultimately, and, you know, anything that'll be done there will be CPC.
Then we go to CPC.
Minus the turf field.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So we need to get something done tonight, other than panic.
Well.
Well, do you want to go, I mean, if we go through the non.
If we go through, like, if we go through, you know, like, Article one is a consent agenda, and that brings us all the way through Article eight.
Right.
Does anybody, I mean, does anybody have any concerns? And do we, will we vote in support or not in support of each article, or just of the consent agenda?
Consent agenda, right.
They can exclude if they want.
Any way we want to.
Yep. Anybody who, I don't, that is part of it.
Oh, well, in case they do, we should probably then vote on each one.
Yeah.
You can do it just like a consent agenda and say, does anyone, any one of you object to any of the eight?
Right, exactly.
That's what I am about ready to do. So, oh, so we have the town reports, which we haven't seen yet, the consent agenda, the salaries.
Moderator.
Moderator.
So do we.
The actuarial, post-employment benefits, real estate tax exemption, the chapter ninety authorization, the department revolving funds, and the PEG local access, which is not transferring it anywhere, just accepting it and putting it into a bucket, right?
Well, this is operating it out of that bucket for use for local access. It can't be used unless you pull it out at town meeting.
So I guess, is there, uh.
I, I move.
A motion in support of Articles one through eight.
I move the Board of Selectmen take affirmative action, or.
Support.
Support, uh, uh, support, vote for affirmative support for Articles one through eight.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Carrie, you have anything?
No, kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Okay, so we got eight done.
Only seventy-two more to go, right?
Nine, uh, I don't see the cost, the reason to not do nine.
The budget transfers. Yeah, is there a motion in support of Article nine?
I move that Board of Selectmen vote to support Article nine.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Okay. How about Article eleven?
What happens to the operating budget? We're not going to do that?
I'm not going to talk about that one yet.
Okay. Eleven, special appropriation. I move the Board of Selectmen support Article eleven.
These are the same amounts as last year?
I thought there was a little one different.
Yeah, the treasure, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a treasure.
Okay.
My second.
All right. Uh, any further discussion?
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
All right. And you guys voted in support of the cap, long term cap.
So, the school tech replacement, this is a wondrous of technology. iPad and regularly scheduled tech replacement, five-year cycle. So the iPads are five years old. And the note here is iPads are central to the curriculum, and they've replaced textbooks at this point.
So they're spending eighty thousand dollars a year on new iPads?
It says, well, I'm texting Scott, because he's, uh, he's on long term caps. iPads and regularly scheduled tech replacements, five-year cycle.
Yeah, so it's laptops.
Okay.
But is this in addition to money that they already have in their budget? I thought somebody.
You think they have tech, tech replacements in the budget?
Yeah, I thought somebody, this is a supplement to it, I thought somebody alluded to that.
And if there were a textbook, which these are claiming to replace, would we be putting them in long term caps? Or would they be assumed into their operating budget?
The SCAND is actually a school that you two hundred, that's a technical technology.
Oh, okay, oh, that's right, we have a school committee member here, that's right, that's right.
So it does, it does supplement that.
Yeah.
And that we do rely on it for those technologies.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion in support of Article twenty-one?
Oh, well, moving right along. What page are you on, please?
Twenty.
Twenty, because there's a lot of things to.
I'm trying to skip all the ones that Gambinos might be here to listen to.
Sixteen.
I move the Board, um.
Pretty soon, there's going to be a warrant article for your sitter.
I, I move the Board of Selectmen support Article twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? No, this is Communications Tower lease.
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
I'm, I'm ready to give you Article twenty-two also, if you want.
Yeah, it's sort of straightforward.
This would be, I struggle with this five, but you think that we're not going to have to pay that much for five?
We're going to go as long as we can without having to pull the trigger on that one, yeah. Yeah, I think part of it is over the next year, Angie and Sylvia and probably me will have to try to push and pry to get that money out.
And we're going to have to spend on the cranberry bog, the M two?
Uh, depends.
I'm going to forget what plan we're doing.
Yeah, depends. But, yeah.
All right, is there a motion on twenty? I mean, on twenty-two?
Twenty-two. I move we recommend approval of Article twenty-two.
Second.
And the CPC unanimously?
So we don't take a position. You always get me on this every year, you know, you always say, did, did CPC support? And we never take a position, it's just we recommend, but if we recommend it to town, right?
We've recommended it.
Right, right, so ultimately, yes. Everything that's on here has been supported, and actually, I think everything was unanimous this year. Unanimous support.
Okay. Any further discussion about these?
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
This next one is for housing trust.
R O S C.
So this is allowing the water to cross.
Yeah.
The water to cross and for Carlisle Affordable Housing to be notified if there were any new projects coming to the planning board, so they would have a chance to weigh in on it.
Right, rather than the housing authority.
Right.
Okay, is there a motion?
That we support Article twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Okay.
Yeah, solar districts, second. Yeah, I mean, we're on it, so.
Yeah, this is still a lot for the school.
Solar districts.
Right.
Yeah.
My move, we support Article twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, this has the smaller, the smaller lot, right?
Yes, yep.
Smaller lot and taller pan, taller, um.
No trees, kind of.
Yeah. Yeah.
Spalding Hill and Spalding Field, that's where they got two hundred people to, from the solar.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Uh, brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Got my name? Okay, Twenty-Five.
That's for us as well.
So, this is us doing the lease.
And the school committee, too.
And the school committee.
I'd say.
Yeah, so that we're-
The position's the authorization to enter into the, all these councils' negotiations.
Okay, right, and all we're doing is voting support of, okay. Is there a motion to support Article Twenty-Five?
I move the Board of Selectmen support Article Twenty-Five.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Um, and how about Twenty-Seven?
I move the Board of Selectmen support Article Twenty-Seven, right to farm.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
You don't want to sit here while we do this?
No, not so much.
Oscar Lilo eye, yeah.
So, you didn't want to do Twenty-Six?
Uh, no, it's got money in it, so I want to just look at those all at once. Um, Twenty-Eight?
Uh, no dog, that's-
No dog license fee over seventy, is there a motion to support?
That's a good revenue stream, though, so.
Yeah, right, no, not really.
I, I move to support Article Twenty-Eight, or, uh, that the Board of Selectmen support Article Twenty-Eight, no dog license fee.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Okay, and-
Twenty-nine.
Thirty-three?
Yeah, I want to do, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Twenty-nine.
I move that, uh, the, who are we? Um, Board of Selectmen vote to support, uh, Article Twenty-nine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Okay.
I skipped thirty.
And Thirty-one, we're going to skip?
Well, do we really want to? Don't we know what we want to do with that?
Um, I'd like to know what they did, but, um-
Yeah, let's wait and see what they vote.
Okay. Excuse me.
May not be that we have to take a position. Um, Thirty-three.
Do you want to do Thirty-two?
I move-
Oh, Thirty-two, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I move that the Board of Selectmen support Article Thirty-two.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thirty-two, Thirty-three, I'm sorry.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Thirty-three.
I move the Board of Selectmen support Article Thirty-three.
Second.
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Okay, Thirty-four is not going to be moved?
Good.
And we just go on the fact that it's not going to be moved? I mean, if somebody were to move it, should we have taken a position? Or we just say it's not going to?
Well, I guess someone could move it.
Right.
I want to take a position on it, then.
You don't have to take a position.
Yeah, but, but we may want to.
There may be a revolt of voters at the polls, I mean, not doing their jobs, but-
We better take a position! Wait a minute, no, maybe we better not.
Be careful what you say.
Yeah.
Okay, so, it's not going to be moved, so we're not going to take a position on it. You can always speak up if it is. And so, Article Thirty-five, uh, amend, uh, General Bylaws, Section Ten Dot One.
I move the Selectmen do not support this amendment, this, um, article.
Do we want to have one that we say not, right? Or do we want to say support, and then we would just vote in opposition, right? You want to keep it consistent, don't you?
No, you can say, you can say, you can say you don't support it, I don't know if, you know how you word it.
No, but what I'm saying is, you would say, the Selectmen support the article, right? And then you just vote against it if you don't. It's, it's enabled.
No, there's, there've been many times, there've been many times when it's unanimously don't support.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
All right.
So Kate has made a motion to not support Article Thirty-five. Okay, is there any further discussion?
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Um, and then, we don't have to do anything on page Thirty-one, right?
No, that's the, that's the-
Actually, from there on?
Yes, that's the-
Yep, that's Thirty-five, so that's our article.
Okay. All right, so going back on these, um, we still have Article Thirty?
Thirty, Spalding.
Right, Thirty, we have-
Uh, Thirty-one, which is CCHS. Done that, we've done that.
Somebody must be to livestream.
Thirty-one.
So, uh-
So, it starts all with ten, we didn't do ten.
Yeah.
We didn't do ten, we didn't do twelve, we didn't do thirteen, we didn't do fourteen, we didn't do fifteen. Uh, did we do sixteen?
No.
No.
No, we shouldn't.
I don't know that we have any choice on that one.
No, I don't think we do.
Is there, is there a motion to support Article Sixteen?
So, so moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Oh.
Kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
So, we didn't do seventeen, we didn't do eighteen, nineteen, or twenty.
Is there a reason you don't?
No, we can do those, they were just a lot of pages.
Yeah. I move that the Board-
So, the first one is banning commercial marijuana, I just want to go through them, make sure that I understand. The first one is banning commercial marijuana sales, correct me if I'm wrong, Pete.
Yeah.
Uh, nineteen is, is, uh-
Eighteen is a full ban.
Yeah.
Uh, nineteen is a partial ban, um, of the eight, um, of the eight, uh, established types by the state, the State Cannabis Commission, um, eighteen would ban all of them, nineteen would only allow craft, craft, uh, craft cooperative and agricultural use.
So, if eighteen passes and nineteen?
It, we are, we have to move all-
Oh, we do?
Yep, because there's also a town ballot associated with this.
Oh, gotcha.
So, let's say eighteen passes, but then the ballot fails for eighteen, then we're out of luck, so.
Gotcha.
My, my rec, my hope is that anyone that supports eighteen will support nineteen as well.
Yep.
Um, you know, that way, it kind of makes sense that we have a Plan B.
Yep.
And Twenty is?
Medical marijuana, that's just cleaning up for the bylaw.
Yeah, it's cleaning up the taxes for the bylaw.
Okay, so is there a motion to support Article Twenty? Because we don't need eighteen or nineteen for that one, right?
No, you don't need eighteen.
Okay, let's get that one down.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, any further discussion? We are doing Article Twenty.
Twenty, kissing her eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar Lilo eye.
Louis eye.
Okay. Could you just quickly describe for me again, what is craft cooperative?
Uh, craft cooperative is a multi-use facility that's limited in square footage, so it's meant to be a smaller business-type facility, as opposed to, like, the larger, uh, distribution centers or agricultural, you know.
Pesky water.
So, it's, it's meant to be more of a small business model than, than the rest of the facilities.
Okay. And what was the planning board's vote on eighteen and nineteen?
Unanimous on both.
Unanimous on both?
Now, granted, we haven't voted on the actual warrant article numbers yet, because we didn't have it, but a while back, we voted to support this and push it to you guys, and that's what I'm quoting as unanimous.
Okay.
So. Now, keep in mind, as you're thinking about these, we did, in the study, try to anticipate if there's any potential revenue from these, and very limited. So, with, across the board, there's about eighty-five percent of the town did not want a retail establishment, and that's the only place that we could collect sales tax on, is on a retail establishment, which would be the three percent. Um, it's only three percent on just the sales portion. So, that's why, as we looked at these, we kind of ruled these out as revenue-making. There is something where the town can recoup costs that we, um, costs that we incur in having one of these facilities in town, so police details, things like that, but that's also capped at three percent, and you, you have to have a proven cost basis, you can't make money on it, it's only to reimburse the town.
So, the big, so the big tax revenues go to the state, not to the town?
No, big tax revenues go to the state, not to the towns.
Yeah, there's no upside here for us.
Yes, that's what the studies have shown, is that it really does cost, cost the town's money to have these facilities in town so far, and that might change in a few years, and then we can look at our bylaws again, but right now, there's, there was no revenue generation opportunity that we saw in, in any of these establishments.
Unless it's a town-owned establishment.
Well, there you go, you're right.
Cranberry bug.
That's an important clarification, Mike.
Yeah, no, that is.
Yeah, no, I, I had-
And so, where, where, if, if there was a craft, I keep wanting to say brewery.
Yeah, right, well, we got to put that right next door.
If there was a craft cooperative, could that only go in the, the locations where the, uh, the medical marijuana?
Yes.
So, this can go?
Yeah, that's the importance of the bylaw, because without a bylaw, it can go anywhere. You know, um, we need the bylaw, one of these two bylaws, to zone it into our currently-established zoning district to support it.
Okay, and so, that's three spots, it's River Road intersection on the right where the book places.
Yep.
And it's across the street.
Next door to Carlisle Autobody.
Carlisle Autobody.
Yep, and then the third one, I don't-
It's right across the street from the first one, isn't it?
Yeah.
The red building right there, that, that one right there.
Oh.
Figure of your bay.
But, they can't, they're not going to, they're not going to grow there in those three spots, because there's not-
Um, no, that would not be growable. The thing about agricultural is it's not truly agricultural, and, but the state does not define the medical, the growing of medical marijuana as agricultural, so it doesn't fall under those laws. Um, so, yeah, you're right, they would not be able to grow, grow there, so, i, i, if that does present an opportunity to the town at one point, we probably have to, like we do with the solar, come back and, and relook at the zoning district for that, for that to support it, and so.
Make sense?
Farm by right, won't let you do it by right, huh?
No, it's not farming by right, no. Yeah, like, six plants, you know, you can farm by right.
That you can do under a grow lamp, and I guess you could do it in the red building.
All right. So, also, by the way, with this, um, Town Council said nobody grows outside, nobody grows in traditional fields, there's a very super-high water demand for this, and it's usually container-based, so, it's not like we're going to have a cash crop growing across Phos Farm with this stuff, it's, it'll be containers, you know.
You wait till the cranberry bug, there's a lot of water there.
Well, the, the water, yes, yeah, like I said, hydroponic is probably, there might be a future in that for us.
So, um-
Okay, so that, that changes my mind on this whole thing.
So, how is it that we're able to, just because you went through all this, how is it that we're able to say that, you know, you can't do it in our town, if it's a state law?
Um, so here's how you can do it, if you had a majority vote at the ballot, then the, the can't, the law, the mass general law, does have a statute in there that says that we can now ban it in our town, but you need to have the majority vote at the ballot, that's why, after town meeting, we have to have a majority vote there, because it passed in our town by fifty-two percent. So, by majority, it's really flipped that, it's kind of minority, right? It's, the, if the marijuana, um, general law at the ballot failed in our town, you know what I mean, by under fifty percent, then you could just do it right now, by right, with no other work. Well, because it passed by fifty-two, we have to go back to the ballot and get this special ballot question to be, to pass at the, at the ballot box, too.
Because it can't be, yeah, we want it in the state, but not in our town.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot, um, yeah.
Wouldn't it pass the state if they hadn't?
And if you, but, and if you look around us, most of the communities are following the same suit with either, Bill Rick is the only one that has unlimited zoning, um, but it's, it's to a specific geographical area, and I think I described this to you guys the other night, right, right on our border, by the way, you know, on that side there. So, that, that is unlimited zoning, but every other town around us either has a full ban or a partial ban, like we're looking for, um, that is banning, uh, retail establishments.
Okay, and this bans retail establishments?
Retail establishments, yes.
Only wholesale establishments.
The, the second one of those is banning, is really focused on banning the retail establishments.
Nineteen.
Distribution and, and sales, where it lets the agricultural piece, the, in the craft cooperative, um, you know, the, the second one would let that occur in our town.
And if eighteen and nineteen don't, if eighteen and nineteen, if nothing happened with eighteen and nineteen, so there was no ban at all, it could still only happen in those zones, in those, in those three locations?
No, no, if eighteen and nineteen both fail, we are unzoned, it could happen anywhere in town. Now, keep in mind that it's just-
Eight, you have one of each, as the eight types, right?
One of each of the eight types, is a matter, so, the state law reads that, um, you can have, you can zone, the, the state law is basically zone, I got to get the wording right on this, it's a maximum of twenty percent of the total number of package stores you have in your town. Why are they based on package stores? I don't know. So, that means that we have one package store, so we round up, so we could have one of each eight type, of eight types in town by, by law, and without a zoning bylaw of our own, they could go anywhere. Now, there's still a host community agreement that needs to be done by the Board of Selectmen, so, um, it, it'll be, we, people can come in and ask to go anywhere, but then what will end up happening is, because it's state law, they enter enough, into negotiation with the state first, and then they have to enter into negotiation with the town for a host community agreement. Um, I don't think we can block them, but it's something where you do have a little, it's like a site plan review type thing, where you have a little bit of say in that, so.
So, if I'm understanding, you are recommending that regardless of where we stand on Article Eighteen, we should definitely support Article Nineteen, because that's kind of our-
That's our, our fallback, that's, yeah.
Our fault, our protection in case, uh, Article Eighteen passes at the polls or wherever. Our protection in case Article eighteen passes at the polls or wherever.
So a natural question might be, why didn't we go for, just like another, to limit it to the zoning laws? Town council seemed to think that having three options was way too confusing. So we wanted to keep it at two, and from the survey results, it looked like number two was up around eighty-five percent, you know, approval rating. So we really hope that number two will pass, the town at least. We're giving number one a shot, because the majority of people wanted it. I don't think, whether or not it gets two-thirds of the vote, we'll see. But I do think that the second article should hopefully have the support that we need to get it to go by, to go through.
Okay.
So can I make the motion on Article nineteen then, to support?
Sure. Anybody have any more questions on nineteen?
So I move that the Board of Selectmen support Article nineteen.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Kissing your eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar light.
Blue side.
Okay.
I don't know. I wanna get into eighteen.
I don't, I don't. So let's just see, are there other ones here? I think, so we've left all the hard ones. Have you been keeping?
No, we didn't do nineteen.
We didn't do eighteen.
Sorry, we didn't do eighteen. We did nineteen. That was what we just voted on.
Okay, so we still have to do ten. Still have to do twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Fifteen. Seventeen. All right, so does anybody feel like they're ready to discuss the complete streets?
That's twenty-one.
I know that's, so, yeah, it's a low number. Are you ready to discuss thirteen? Complete streets. That way they don't have to keep paying.
No, fifteen is municipal facilities.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Complete streets.
Do you have anything, any comments about complete streets? Carrie?
No, I don't. I think we, I think we had a vote on it.
But this is, this is the fifty thousand.
This is the fifty thousand.
This is fifty, right?
Yeah.
Well, there isn't any other money.
No, right, 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 but it's just, it's complete streets, but it's a supplement to the grant.
Do you wanna make a motion, Carrie?
I vote that I move that we support Article thirteen. That the town of Carlisle, complete streets and crosswalk safety enhancements be supported by the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I think the time is of the essence, basically.
Okay. All those in favor?
Kissing your eye.
Read eye.
Brown eye.
Oscar light.
Blue side.
I mean, honestly, from there, I just really need to think hard about it, because I wanna make sure that I'm not overreacting to four point two-three percent.
It's possible to overreact.
And, and just automatically voting against everything else.
Yeah. Can we?
I think part of what would be nice to know, too, and Ballmy's not still here, we should be at something. Is, for example, the police station, right? It's a million bucks. You know, what's the impact gonna be over the next few years? This was, I started to say this earlier, but I stopped. Like, I, I really don't like it when, you know, people put an article in the sky and say, oh, the impact is only fifteen dollars under tax, but, yeah, this year, but it's all in perpetuity, right? And obviously, these aren't. But, but they are for an extended period of time, you know, and when you start adding them up. You know, what, you know, how exactly are we gonna fund these and, you know, are we gonna get, you know, get off easy this year, but get slammed next year? Because then ultimately, what's gonna happen is next year, we're gonna have a list of all these things that we approved this year, that didn't hit us hard this year, but they're gonna hit us hard next year, and it's the same boat. We'll be at four and a half percent.
Right, well, we already know that if we approve the school parking, the salt shed, the contingency for facilities, the wood chipper, the fuel tank, the septic, the one-ton pickup and the trailer, that's gonna cost us thirty-seven thousand dollars this year, but a hundred and eighty thousand dollars next year.
Right, exactly. And then what's it gonna cost us the year after that?
The school parking, the two-hundred-and-fifty K for the six, the Carlisle schools, I thought was going to really be reimbursed by the lease.
Yeah, funded by the solar.
So that's, I'm not sure you can count that in there.
I just wanna ask the board if you would consider taking a position on that article tonight? Because the way that we intend to move those articles at town meeting is solar overlay district bylaw changes, the lease agreements. If the, if the lease agreements don't pass, then we wouldn't be moving the paving article. But if they do, and there's a project going there, it's taught in solar campaign.
He can't hear you. Is there any way, sorry.
You have to come to.
And the microphone, sorry.
So, I do. So I wanted to ask if you would consider taking a position tonight on the paving, Article twenty-six, because the way that we're intending to do this is, you know, move the solar overlay district bylaw amendments first. The lease agreements next. And if those lease agreements, if they don't pass, then we wouldn't move the paving article. But if they do, then there will be a construction project in the school parking lot, which is thirty-two years old. It's at the end of its useful life. Thirty years is about what you can hope to get out of those. So they will be trenching and digging it up and ripping it apart. And the resurfacing, I mean, the patch job will only make it worse. The resurfacing is gonna be really important at that point. The lease agreement that the school committee will enter into is gonna generate revenue. And, you know, we'd like that to be consideration for the fact that we need to resurface the lot. So they kind of go together. I think it's important for us to take care of our municipal assets. Obviously, you know, the parking lot is one, so I was hoping that we could get the board to consider that tonight.
So to Kate's point, though, do they, is that off the table now that they're, Amara's go, they're not gonna pay for it? I thought that was the last thing that was kind of.
So we, so there's some confusion about that, and I'm sorry. We had, we had hoped that they might give us a large upfront lease payment to cover it, to cover the expense. And we asked about that, and they gave us two scenarios. And we took it to FinCom, and, you know, we're looking at the two scenarios. The one payment was a lower amount based on the net present value. Then over twenty years, the payments were just, it was a better deal, better way to go. So, so we stuck with that, and, you know, we've asked them if they would be able to put some amount towards the paving, a paving allowance, based on what their repairs would have been afterwards. So, but that's not gonna be, it's not gonna amount to much, but.
Before we do this, is there anything else that goes under that, you know, wires or pipes or, is there anything that goes under that that we should consider repairing? I mean, this is probably a question for.
Currently under there.
Yeah, that's currently under there, so you don't dig it up in two years and go, uh-oh.
Turn up my x-ray vision and let's see.
Well, but, but they must know what's under there, right?
So, yeah, if we, you know, one of the things somebody mentioned that was kind of forward-thinking, I thought, was to lay some extra conduit there.
Yeah, put conduit and stuff.
Lay some extra conduit there, because, you know, in the future, we may wanna have charging stations for electric car there or something. Do you know what I mean? It's, that's kind of the future, so I don't think it would be too much more to have them put some extra conduits so we would be able to have that opportunity. But I don't know, as far as anything needs to be repaired, I mean, our facilities director would probably know.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I think that's important to determine, because if it's gonna be, you know, because you might as well do it, I mean, right? If you're gonna do wiring and if there's gas lines. I mean, I don't know what's under there.
That's, the problem with this town is we're really short on as-bills. It's really hard to know until you stick your shovel in the ground and then you hit the gas pipe.
Yeah, well, that's, I think we're pretty sure that they'll do their due diligence before.
Dig safe will come.
Yeah, well, dig safe would.
Yeah, but it's more so just if there's gonna be a cost to fix things, right? So you're not, I mean, I guess it hasn't been dug up for thirty years, so maybe there's nothing under it. But just something we should look into.
I get away, I'll take that before.
Oh, Jesus, no, we don't wanna look for that. No, 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 no. You leave that covered, yeah.
So.
So anyway, for consideration of the paving, I mean, they're really, really looking at this as, you know, the lease payments would be helping to offset that cost.
I totally get that. I think my, I'm just looking at this whole list here. And I think that, you know, taking it ahead of time without considering everything, I would vote against it.
Well, what they're saying is they're not even gonna, they won't even move it if they don't get the solar panels.
She's asking us to take a position on it tonight.
Well, I was just wondering if we could take, say that we would be in support of it if and only if the first two.
Well, that, I think.
Preceding.
They wouldn't move it unless that happened.
Well, that's right. So, so if they moved it, it means that those things did pass. And if those things pass and they're digging it up to put the panels in, we really have no choice. We can't put it off another year. They could put it off a year, let's say even two years, if we don't dig it up.
And how many of these things are we gonna be saying that about?
Well, and also, it's more than just the parking lot. It's the whole roadway around the back and all that sort of thing is included in this.
They'll be doing significant trenching there anyway.
Yeah, they'll be trenching everywhere for that thing.
Not necessarily the road.
Well, where the buses come up, yeah.
Well, it's around, going to the back of the building.
Oh, to the back of the building, okay. Yeah, but none of that will be done. All of that would be put off. It would not be spent this year.
I also thought, and now Victor's in here, but I thought it would be a bond. A bond would be taken for that, and then it wouldn't impact, it wouldn't impact the taxes, right?
It would be borrowed.
Yeah. Well, it impacts the taxes.
Well, I mean, it doesn't, it's not the same, but it doesn't, right.
Right, and, and it's possible if it doesn't.
It's like sixty grand a year. For five years. After the first year. It's twelve thousand five hundred the first year.
Yeah.
And what are, what are the?
About the twenty, was it twenty thousand a year?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you remember the?
Depends on the block, but, yeah, it would be, payment and lieu of taxes for block three would be about twenty-two thousand plus, or no, the lease payment would be about twenty-two thousand, and then there would be an additional ten thousand, which is the payment and lieu of taxes for just the school, and then the transfer station would be about the same amount. If we get into a higher block, then it's better. The lease payments would be higher.
So of this, sixty thousand a year possibly would recoup?
Well, block one would be thirty-five thousand, right?
Unlikely to be given in block one, no, but.
And the transfer station would be thirty. So it would be somewhere between eighty, between all of the payments would be eighty thousand or down to sixty thousand, right?
Yeah, something like that.
Sixty to eighty thousand.
I'd like to not take a position on it, I think.
Okay, thanks for, no, thanks for considering.
At the next meeting, but.
Yeah, we have to, we really need to. I just don't even know how we're gonna get through this. I think a lot of us are gonna, you know, we're all gonna have to do a lot of thinking between now and then, and a lot of math. Am I blowing this out of proportion?
No, I don't think so. Do, do we wanna just talk about them quick, though?
Okay.
But I'm sorry, how about what?
The, like, capital, long-term caps.
Oh, okay.
And the municipal facilities. I mean, because I'd like to get a sense just of the rest of the board, like, you know, if there are certain things that you say, yeah, you know, maybe those don't really make sense, or, hey, we really need those, and this is why.
Sorry to keep you guys all here so long.
That's all right. It's fun.
It's fun. What's that? I don't, I think we're just gonna be talking about these numbers now. Thank you, Wayne.
Well, that's the key. So what is it? So what is acceptable?
Well, I guess, I guess my, my thing right now is just the low hanging fruit, right? Are they lower hanging fruit?
But what do we think this spill remediation thing is gonna commit at?
That's what I said, ten to twenty thousand.
Ten to twenty thousand.
And that might be for multiple years.
Right, but it'll be ten to twenty thousand per year for multiple years.
No, ten thousand. Well, I'm thinking it's gonna be around ten thousand a year. Question is, should we do it for two years so that we can figure out a way to, to put that in somebody's budget?
Oh, yeah, like for.
So it's not always a warrant article every year. Because right now, for instance, there is regular testing at the.
Ferns.
No, we don't do ferns. Ferns does ferns. We do the police station. Where else do we have wells that we're testing?
Center Park.
Center Park. Yeah, we have, that, we already have in our budget every year.
And is that pretty solid, that you think that we can cut fuel spill remediation from a hundred to twenty thousand?
Well, SP's supposed to get us a number this week. Keep working on.
Okay, we should, then.
It'll be much less, he said, but he doesn't.
That's, that's an easy cut for us to make.
Yeah, we can do that. Do that.
But, yeah, we, but, but, yeah, we should wait until next.
Okay.
What'd you forget?
Do we add any more for the additional funds? Do we do that expenditure?
No, no.
No reason. Okay.
No, I got that this afternoon. No, that wasn't on this.
Okay, so we already approved the complete streets one. All right, so you wanted to go through these?
Yeah, I mean, is there anything that, you know, people just, I mean, long-term caps, right?
I have no idea what the painting in the, you know, the, I don't know, I don't know the importance of that.
They go around the building and they paint every year, you know, so. Is the building going to fall down if they don't do it? I don't think so.
It's not just part of their regular maintenance.
Yeah, what?
It's part of their regular maintenance. They, you know, they go around. So, now, one of the interior finishes, as I recall, though, was a, I'm trying to remember. I think one of the interior finishes, it says, because it says, in painting and interior finishes, was a floor, a bathroom floor, which is tile, and I think it was the largest chunk of this. They had some bathroom that needed to be re-tiled. Now, that I'm not opposed to, because I think floors are important, because you can trip and slip and fall on floors. But painting, you know, I guess I'm less sympathetic to. The ceiling replacement, again, as I recall, it was, you know, ugly.
Yeah, the function. I mean, it's not falling down.
I don't think it's falling down. I think they're just water stained. The fire alarm is important. That's health, safety.
Yep.
I bristle at the eighty K for technology. I'm sorry. Their textbooks, I mean, if it's just a five-year thing, I'm not sure it even belongs on.
Right.
You know? So, in fact, that's been a discussion in the, in the long-term caps, is where do we put technology? Should it even be in long-term caps, because most technology doesn't last longer than five years? And where can we get more expertise to help us go through these, because none of us are IT experts? And they, people keep on saying, well, it's on the five-year plan, and we just keep on.
If they already have a hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars in their budget for that, and this is just a supplement to it, why don't they just include this in their budget?
Well, I'm, I'm.
I mean, I can understand the first year they did it, when they decided, okay, we're gonna buy everybody an iPad. But now it's standard. It's ongoing expense.
And, as I said, if it's replacing textbooks, it belongs in their budget. We shouldn't be buying textbooks.
So I mean, I think what we could say is, we either we do or we don't support this, but next year, we don't expect to see it here.
I think that would be fair.
I don't, you know, I think it's hard for us to cut it at this point, though.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's actually, that's a good point.
I think that's the way to go.
Right, we've been wondering about this, not coming in here again next year.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and then it ultimately, because we spend now and there will be higher budget next year, that's deferring some of next year's ouch, right? That's a good point. That's actually, yeah, I like that.
And then they can decide how important that is relative to something else.
Yes, yes.
See, they, I want them to make those decisions. And we have, as I said, we're always squeezing and chasing, one and two and five thousand. And then if we, you know, God forbid, you get a three-hundred thousand dollar thing, we feel we can't do it. But that's not, I feel it's fair. You know, we, we do at some point have got to turn that corner.
Especially when it's two-thirds of the town budget.
Yeah.
Right, well, it's just.
All right, so it looks like, it looks like, you know, we'll probably support it this year, but it's not gonna be there next year. What do we think about the cruiser?
There we go.
Well, is this a half a cruiser or a full?
No, this is a full cruiser.
This looks like a whole cruiser, all four wheels.
It's a full cruiser, and honestly, I've forgotten, you know.
I mean, basically, he's at the point where I believe that what he's been describing over the years is that every year, there's a cruiser replacement, but one year, there will be two cruiser replacements. And that's kind of the pattern that we're on right now.
It might be, now, okay, so let's, let's talk about the police station. It might be that if they are garaged, they will last longer, because they won't be sitting outside idling as long.
Yeah, I think his cutoff is a mileage.
Yeah.
He's a hundred thousand miles.
It's when, it's when the maintenance goes up dramatically on them.
But I believe the maintenance goes up more because they are just sitting there idling. But it's, I know it's not, I think you get fewer miles on the engine. Because you're, because you're running the engine, even though your tires aren't spinning.
Because I know he's talked about the cost of doing Dodges versus GMCs and that sort of thing. Four times as expensive to get the Dodger services as the Chevys and the GMCs. the GMCs.
Yeah.
That sort of thing. And it's a lot of money. I was surprised when he told me what the month was in Ottawa.
Yeah.
He loves the Tahoe's.
Yeah.
Okay. The ballistic vests, that's more or less state mandated and that, to me, health, safety, welfare.
No, that's not mandated. That is, that is discretionary and he tried to get that, he tried to make that mandatory for the entire police force, and then it could be covered by a state grant.
Oh, is that what it was?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think he's still planning to do that, but he doesn't know that he can get the grant. I mean, it hasn't been approved, so, yeah, so that may, he may not need that.
Got it. So, maybe he would give us that back if he doesn't spend it.
I can't remember whether we put that in the contract or not.
No, because it wasn't there and then it came back out.
That was gonna be a side letter.
It was a side letter? Okay, yeah, you're right, okay, yeah.
So, is this wood chipper, a new wood chipper?
No.
'Cause we don't have one anymore, or is this a replacing one?
It's, uh, it's a used one and I believe it's bigger than the one that he's using and the one that he's using is, yeah, is overused because of the past couple of years. It's, you know, on its last legs at the end of its useful life. The, the protective clothing washer dryer is special because it, it's not just your, you know, regular laundromat because it can take out all the chemicals, when they, they use a lot of chemicals and it really sanitizes the clothes and things. And the, and I think they can turn every, all the uniforms around in, I think it was twenty-four hours with that.
What do they do now? Does it just take them longer?
I beg your pardon?
What do they do now?
Uh, well, they, I don't think it sanitizes. They wash them, but I don't think it does, it doesn't get everything out that it needs to get out. So, again, that's a, that's a important one.
Does that wastewater need to go somewhere special?
The what?
Does that wastewater need to go somewhere special? Can it just go into a septic?
Uh, no, yeah.
It goes into the wetland right behind.
No, it actually goes into a, I think some dry well someplace first and it's oil separated.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, there's gotta be something that goes there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be inclined, just because of everything else we're doing, I'd be inclined not to support the washer and dryer or the wood chipper. I would support him renting a wood chipper if he needs to.
Yeah.
But this year is, this, this, the year that we don't wanna, and I'm just trying to look somewhere.
We already took out a couple of other things that he asked for and he almost never asks for anything.
And I'm just looking at three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Understand. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to, but I'm also trying to tell you the history of what went through, 'cause he also had a-
I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing things out there. I'm not saying this is what we're doing. I'm just throwing things out there as a starting point for us to discuss. And for fifteen, I would throw out the salt shed.
Yes.
Okay, that's, I'm, I'm getting on the salt shed. The rest of the things, honestly, are health, safety issues.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with that. Yeah, I think the salt shed goes and the other stuff stays.
Just means there's a whole lot of other things we can't do. And we're looking at a six, what, six and a half percent? Let's see what-
Well, it wouldn't be that much, right, 'cause it's lower in the first year. What's gonna kill us is the future years.
That's-
When Kate's chair.
I, you know, I refuse to only look at the thirty-seven thousand dollars.
No, I agree.
I mean, it's, it's-
Yeah, no, well, that's what I'm saying.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars is totally being dishonest-
Right.
-to the town.
No, exactly. It kills us in the future years. It's the out years that are kind of nightmarish.
Right, so we have to look at that hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we're adding.
Right.
So, if we do all this, we're adding over a million dollars. So, it's a thirty million, so what is that percentage?
A million.
What's that?
Thirty-one point seven.
Yeah.
Right, but there's also, so there's twenty-one, then what's twenty-two and twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five? I'd like to see the, you know, they're all five-year notes. What's the five-year?
Yeah, but if we just take the one-twenty, if we add these up-
Yeah.
And we add that to the four-point-seven-three, what, you know, what is the percentage now?
Yeah, I don't know. That's what I need to figure.
Yeah.
And then I have to say, what's a reasonable increase?
Right, it's, it's at least five-point-two-three.
Well, it's-
Is that what we want? You know, and I understand that some of these things are really, really important, but, you know, we're gonna be driving people out of town because of these important things that, you know, maybe it could last, it could wait a, a year.
Yeah.
Well, and the question is, does that put you over your, does that put you over your two-and-a-half percent?
I'm already over it, right?
No, I mean, two-and-a-half percent total? No, we have, we have quite a bit of capacity or what, excess tax, uh-
Levy.
Capac, levy. Yes, thank you. It's getting late.
Yeah. Well, you know what, I'll, I'll call John tomorrow. I gotta finish up his contract anyway. I'll ask him if he truly needs a cruiser. And he'd, oh, you're killing me, but, I mean, I can ask him about that. And then-
And the vests.
And the, oh, and the vests, yeah, if he's gonna get a grant for the vests.
By the way, the DPW, there's also a used truck he's buying.
Yeah, that's another thing, too. I don't know, you know, the whole used thing. But also, sorry, just staying with, with the other stuff here. You know, computer replacement at the fire department. I mean, it's only two thousand dollars, but, and then-
And there's one every year, though.
Yeah, but that's why, I mean, how many computers do they have and can't they go? I mean, Brian's probably not gonna use it anyway. He's probably got some laptop that he's gonna bring, bring either way.
Break that much to a warrant.
Yeah, exactly. You know, and then the library, I mean, you know, computer replacement technology, you know, I, I think those computers get a lot of use and it's a public space and I think that, that's a little different. But then there was the computer replacement for the police, right? Can't they go another year?
So, it would be nice if we can revitalize our IT committee to vet some of these things for us.
Yeah.
Also, or, or, I don't know, do we, and generate, I think they generated a five-year plan somewhere along the line, but I, I've never seen it and-
I'd be happy to show it to you, but it's also all over.
Yeah.
It's five years, okay, so then we need a new one, then, you know? Maybe there's, you know, something new out there or something different we could think about doing. And now, you know, when you guys did it, nobody was using the cloud five years ago, really.
Yeah.
You know, everything's in the cloud now.
Our plan was to move to the cloud and we did.
Okay, well, it's all good.
But, you know, I think, I'm sorry, I, I think that we're done. I think what we need to do is we need to just take a, take a look at this stuff and think really, really hard about it and, you know, be open-minded to what we've put in and what we don't put in. And we're gonna have to just make really, really hard decisions, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And, and what we support and what we don't support.
We'll be moving on.
You know, ultimately, you know, a lot of really, really hard work went into a lot of these things by a lot of different committees and, you know, they did a lot of really, really great work. But then it all comes to us and we've gotta figure out-
Right.
What can we afford to do? You know, it's, if we say no to anything in here, it's not because it's not a really great idea. It's not because a lot of work didn't go into it, it's just we can't make it fit within the budget. So, I think the first thing that we need to think about is, what number are we comfortable with?
Yeah.
You know, what percentage increase are we really, really comfortable with?
But I would like then, also then, to break down the various parts of town and see, you know, if schools are getting five percent increase.
Yeah.
You know, they need to be playing this game with us, you know?
Yeah, we can't ever have the rest, the rest of the town suffer because they get a huge increase.
That's right. I, see, this is what I'm trying, this is what I'm advocating for. I'm not attacking the schools. On the other hand, I feel like the schools have to remember that they're part of this community.
Right, part of the community.
And this community is-
Yeah, I totally agree. I mean, that's why we're, you know, in these negotiations and all that. I think what we're talking about here, though, and, and I completely agree with you. I think what we're talking about, though, right now, is which of these warrant articles are we going to support? Because, you know, we're already at two-point, you know, four-point-two-three.
Yeah.
And so, which of the warrant articles, I'm not sure, and I do know that, you know, I purposefully did not have us take a position on the operating budget, just in case there's something that we have to do, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But I, I feel like it's so late for us to try to effect a change there. You know, we've been a part of the process. We've really been pushing back on that and everything. I think this just, it's limited as to what we can do because so much of it is driven by salaries. But what we can do is decide, is now when we're gonna spend eight hundred thousand dollars on a police station, you know? Is now when we're gonna spend, you know, money on a trailer or a salt shed or, and I'm not saying that any of those aren't important. It's just, I think we need to, we can't do everything here. It'd be interesting, you know, I don't, I don't think, you know, we, we were able to get it really quickly, but it'd be interesting just, you know, put this all on a spreadsheet and figure out what are the percentages, you know?
Well, I'm gonna do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's gotta be a very, very big-
And I'm willing to trim a hundred and twenty off of a salt shed if the school's willing to take off eighty K for-
Well, the thing is, though, it's not their call, it's our call, right? So, I mean-
Okay, well, then, then I'm willing, I'm willing to support taking the hundred and twenty out if somebody else of this committee is willing to take out the eighty.
Yeah, I just, for me, for me, there's, for me, there's just a little bit of difference. I'm not trying to argue, but for me, there's a little bit of difference between, you're not gonna get this thing that we were thinking about doing and, you know, at this point, we're gonna take away something that we've been doing every single year as just kind of a matter, of course. And, you know, so I, I think that there's, you know, I, I think it is reasonable for us to say, look, we either need a whole lot more information about this and, and why it's, you know, what, what you're doing with the other technology money.
And I, I agree with that.
Or, or, you know, we're, you know, we're not gonna do it this way anymore. We have to work out a different way of doing it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, their education programming is based on having those devices.
Right.
So, you can't suddenly say, you know, oh, my gosh, if, if at the end of five years, they're really not useful anymore. You know, you now have, you have to replace, or you have to change your educational programming. That's a big thing.
Yeah.
Push on it, but I'm not sure we're ready to do that.
Right, so I'm, I'm totally, totally open to pushing back and learning more about it next year.
Right, right.
Absolutely.
Because it's come up every single year. I've been on the board for five years. It's like, what is this eighty thousand dollars spent on?
Oh, I know, yeah.
And so, maybe rather than just saying that, we should find out.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
You can, you can take positions on, on the remainder of the articles at, at the next meeting, but-
We have to sign it tonight.
Have to sign the warrant because we gotta go to the printer and post it and all of that.
He wants us to accomplish something tonight.
Well, so that we have a warrant.
Slave driver.
Don't have to agree with all, you can vote it down, but, yeah.
So, are we voting anything or are we just signing? Do you have to take a vote? We already voted to close it, right?
We closed it. I guess you can vote to, vote to execute it or just execute it? Sign it so it can be posted?
Let's just, let's just be executed.
Yeah. So, then, actually Drew called me today. I'll make sure he comes in for Article thirty. Is there anybody else that we need to make sure we notify?
To come in and chat with us?
Yeah, you know, just kinda-
I'd really like to talk to facilities committee-
Yeah.
And long-term caps.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so are we signing this?
And, yeah.
They'll sign anything.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty, other than the typo that it's not Mach, it's March?
This is, this is Boston, though, it is Mach.
Mach.